All right. Good morning. The May 12th, 2025 meeting of the Anorundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. And we will hear our first set of department budget presentations. And we will begin our presentations with the county executive's office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Christine Anderson. I'm the chief administrative officer for Anorundel County. And with me is my trusty budget assistant director, Stephen Terro. What I'd like to do this morning is just walk you through the budget book page by page for both the county executive's budget as well as the chief administrative officer's budget. I do not have a specific presentation, so if there are questions or something that I can answer, please let me know. I'm going to start on page 97 is actually the start of the county executive's budget, but page 98 shows you the comparative expenditure statement. The majority of the increase in the county executive's budget is found in the video lottery impact funds. That's about $550,000 or so thousand, actually closer to $580,000 of the total increase. On page 99, you will see this is the general date.
Pardon me. I'm sorry. Could you just give us a minute to find the page in the book?
Oh, sure. Page 99 is where I'm at right now.
Thank you. We have two different books here, so I wasn't clear which, or I don't know. We've got to find which book it's in, too.
That's okay. It's the operating budget book. Yep. We won't be talking about capital this morning, at least with me. Yes? Okay. Very good. Sure. So on page 99, this is the county executive's day-to-day operating budget. It only goes up about $8,000 plus $4,500. These are just some changes in some contractual service, something like printing. No new positions there. Moving on to page 100, this is actually for the Economic Development Corporation. And previously, they had been budgeted as a grant under the county executive's budget. That was moved to the CIO budget, and so you'll see that again there, but we actually won't be discussing it. Amy Gowen, the executive director and CEO of the AEDC, will be coming up and sharing some time with you. Page 101 is the largest change here in the county executive's budget, and that is the Laurel Race Track Impact Fund. There's about $447,000 that's currently appropriated. If you are looking for some of the details on this, the Community Development Services, Erin Karpowitz will be up here in a little bit, and she'll be able to provide some more detail on that. All right. And then moving on to the last item is the VLT community grants. That is on page 102. But I will say that the detail you're probably most interested in is on page 163 of the budget book. So that's all I have for the county executive's operating budget for our fiscal '27. Let me answer any questions. 163 for VLT. Yep. That's okay. Yep. 163 is a good page.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So in the CIO's budget, you've got some positions shifting around.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, I was only talking about the county executive's budget. I'm happy to walk through the pages next for the CIO.
Apologies?
Nope. That's fine. Absolutely.
That's all right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
May I?
Mm-hmm.
Just out of curiosity, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Annapolis and Anorundel County, that grant and the video lottery impact, is that for a particular project?
There is a video lottery, there is a grant here, but there is also a grant that you will see in the CIO budget, and that might be the one that you're thinking of. I will let Erin Karpowitz and her team speak to the specific use for these funds.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, it's fine. Thank you.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Which grant would the literacy council's request lie within? Would that be county executive or?
I'm going to ask Stephen Terro. Do you know? It might be a community grant. I'm going to turn. Yep. All right. So that, again, Erin Karpowitz will be able to speak about the CSG or community support grants.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Pickard. Anyone, any further questions on the county executive's budget? All right. Continue, Ms. Anderson.
Rolling right along. Okay. Very good. The CIO budget begins on page 113, and there are nine different funds in this budget that begin on page 114. Like with the county executive's budget, a few of these funds are out of the day-to-day operational control of the CIO. I provide more executive sponsorship, shall you say, and the CEOs of those groups are here today to talk with you. So I will walk through them individually. Specifically, Community Development and the Housing Trust Fund will be spoken to by Erin Karpowitz during the Anorundel Community Development Services budget presentation. And the Workforce Development Fund will be spoken about with Kirk Murray when the Workforce Development Corporation comes before you in a few days. And then Economic Development Corporation will be discussed later this morning. So moving on, there are a few position changes in the county, excuse me, the chief administrator's office budget. There's no net change. It still remains at 20 positions. However, we have two positions moving out of the CIO budget and two new positions. So I'll walk through those individually. The Resilience Authority Director was a position under the CIO's budget. And per the request of the Resilience Authority Board and a bill that you all passed, 4725, that was requested to become a position appointed directly by the board. So that position moves out of the CIO budget, and it is something that will be directly under the Resilience Authority Board. We also had a grant manager position. It was an executive management assistant is the technical classification. That was a grant management function that was in the CIO's office. It really is the kind of thing the county should have ongoing, given just the number of grants the county processes, as well as a lot of uncertainty in the grants world that just is inherent in granting. So that position, we are proposing to move to the Office of Finance as a program manager to ensure that consistency over the coming years. So with those two positions leaving, we also have the request to add two new positions. And these are both related to 41 Community Place, which you may remember is the nonprofit center. It is beautiful. It is ready to open. They've already been doing trainings for over the past year. But as the facility is ready to open, we need a office or event assistant to assist with evenings and weekends, being able to keep the building secure by being there when people are in the building and providing admittance and making sure people know how to turn the lights on and take care of all the AV equipment. The other position that we are asking for is a Director of Learning. That task has certainly been, currently been done by our executive director, Jen Purcell. But again, as we're staffing up and the nonprofit center is taking off, a Director of Learning to really focus on the types of trainings that the nonprofits in our community have asked for, that position is now needed. Can I answer any questions on the positions before I move into some of the more specific units? All right. So then we'll move ahead to the Police Accountability Board. That's on page 115. This position, excuse me, this budget unit is flat. No growth here except for costs for the countywide pay increases and benefits. There are some increases that are happening with the stipends. And again, those were programmed and planned for the PAB members themselves, as well as the ACC members. Page 116 is the Economic Development Corporation. And Amy Gowen, as I said, is here to talk with you about that. Oh, sure.
Could you just tell us a little bit more about the changes in the stipends?
Sure. I think it was a statutory increase, just going from one amount to a slightly higher amount for the PAB members. And they are paid slightly higher stipends than ACC, or maybe I have that reversed. Might have it reversed, actually. I can provide more information on the exact dollar amounts for those stipends if that would be helpful.
Actually, if you could just tell me, I guess, does that, since they're, you know, board members, does it fall into personal services? What category does it fall in here in the object?
Chairman, or Rovian, Councilwoman Rovian, sorry. So we can give you the exact details of what those stipends are going up. There's a whole document that lays out. I think it is statutorily increasing. So we'll provide that document to you if you don't have it already. But it would fall under contractual services. So stipends are paid out of that $242,000 line item right there under contractual services on page 115.
Okay. So it looks like it's the same, though?
Correct. So they can absorb that increase within their existing appropriation. So we didn't have to increase that line item.
Okay.
There are just some vacancies there, but I wanted you to be aware that the stipends are increasing statutorily.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. As I mentioned, Economic Development on page 116 will be a later attraction. So page 117 is the bulk of the CIO budget. This is the Management and Control Bureau. This includes the day-to-day operations of the CIO office, as well as funding for the Resilience Authority, 41 Community Place, which is the nonprofit center, and our Office of Multicultural Affairs. There is a net increase of $6.8 million in this budget, this line item, the management control budget. I will walk through what some of those specific items are, because I think that's, will answer a few other questions that I know have already come up. There is a set aside budget for some grants, things that happen throughout the year. That will increase by $50,000 to $125,000. There is a $2 million line item for the City of Annapolis Welcome Center. This is a joint project that they came to the county and asked for. It's not a joint project, but they did come to the county and ask for a contribution to the Welcome Center. There is $500,000 set aside in this line item for the Lothian Boys and Girls Club, which I know answers your question. We are also doing a partnership project with the Central Maryland Y, and we will be working on, instead of the county building a library in the Millersville general area, we are partnering with the Central Y, and it will be a grant contribution to them for the construction of that facility. And then when it opens, we will share the facility with them. That is $12.5 million. In addition, there's a few other items happening here. The program includes a $75,000 grant for Toys for Tots, right, included in the budget. We also needed to make a few adjustments to the Resilience Authority. Their amount is going to go up by about $303,000. The Resilience Authority, we also are adding some funding for some specific programs. So that's about $2.4 million, specifically a revolving loan program, a program called Resilient and Ready Anorundel, helping to fund a CFO as they've grown. This is sort of planned growth for them. They don't necessarily need a full-time person, but we definitely want to assist them with keeping track of all the dollars and cents. So bringing in a fractional chief financing officer makes sense for the Resilience Authority. And then also some funding, I believe it's $50,000 for a trolley study with the City of Annapolis. It's just a feasibility study to look at that. All right?
So I just, this is just some logistical type questions about those things that seem to be catch-all for some projects that perhaps don't fit exactly somewhere else. But for instance, just $375,000 for the Office of Multicultural Affairs grants, why isn't that listed under the Office of Multicultural Affairs? I'm just logistically looking at why these things are listed here and not in other departments.
So that is, they don't have their own standalone budget unit. They are budgeted under the CIO. We could create a separate bureau for them. It's a fairly new office. We just haven't taken that budgetary step. So it shows up under management and control. But your point's well taken. It could be isolated to highlight it more specifically.
Same thing. I mean, I'm just wondering, you know, the Resiliency Authority or some of those, why aren't they under those specific areas?
They just have been budgeted as grants to or contributions to, even though the Resilience Authority is a construct of both the city and the county. The OMA, the Office for Multicultural Affairs, is an office underneath the CIO's purview. Again, it's just a budgetary thing. We could certainly take that under advisement if that's something that we can look at for future years.
No, I'm just curious. It's a little collection of different things there. Right. But, you know, just curious as to why they're listed there and not.
I mean, Stephen, am I missing anything? And you want to contribute on that? Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just because you raised it, do you guys, what is the location of the Millersville Y Library Project?
So there is a property. Yeah, absolutely. So we are working with the Y. They are the ones that are going to be procuring the property. They have a site that they're interested in. If they don't procure that one, if they're not able to come to terms and buy that property, we'll reassess this and determine if we're going to continue moving forward with the partnership. But the property that they were looking at is on Veterans Highway near West Benfield Road. It was slated to become several homes, I believe.
Thank you.
All right. And we did speak briefly about the Office for Multicultural Affairs. There are three items that make up that $375,000, a children resilience fund, cultural engagement and festival community grants to assist different groups in our community with celebrating some of the really wonderful cultural traditions we have here in Anorundel County. And then finally, the Family Protection Defense Fund is another $150,000, for a total of Any other questions on that large management and control bureau? Okay. So then moving on to the Office of Equity and Human Rights, which is on page 118. The more, majority of the increase here is actually related to personnel and benefits. There are four full-time positions here in this budget. We actually also have some grant funding from the Shepherd Bird Hate Crimes Grant, and that is supporting several different projects that they've got ongoing. And then we're adding just a little bit of additional funding for some supplies for the office. They're doing a lot more outreach activities, and we were finding they were borrowing from other offices, so we're just budgeting it correctly by putting additional funding there. And then moving on now to page 119, the Public Campaign Financing Fund. If you may remember, last year, there was a $1 million contribution to this grant, to this fund. And the fund was actually created by an act by this council, 25-23. The Public Financing Committee voted and asked for an increase of 1.5 million, so that is what you see reflected here in this budget. There's no questions on that. I will move on to page 120, which is everyone's favorite. It's the CIO Contingency Fund. Primarily, we use it for weather operations, winter weather primarily. This year, you will note that it has traditionally been budgeted at $13 million, and we're proposing an increase to $14 million, so just a $1 million change there. The reason we went ahead and were asking for this, for your consideration, is that this year, we've had moderate winter, one might say, and there is a fourth quarter transfer bill in front of you, where we will fully spend the $13 million that was appropriated in this fund. So the Budget Office felt it was prudent to increase that funding just a little bit to protect against future emergencies, have a little bit more set aside. So just as a point of math, this will be 0.58% of the general fund budget this year. The CIO contingency has been as high as 0.77% and as low as 0.53. So this is just a prudent measure to take to add some funding for the contingency.
Madam Chair. Understanding that the contingency fund is used often, most often, for weather-related events, when we contract for snow removal, does that contractual agreement come out of this, or is that out of DPWs?
So you're probably talking about the retainer payments?
Yes.
Yes. That, I believe, comes out of DPW, because it's a small amount and predictable, and we kind of know what we're trying to protect and be ready for in terms of snow response. Once we actually get into a winter program and we see, you know, what exactly happens, nothing, or, you know, a couple of really big events like we had this year, that's when we come back to the council and ask for the additional funding from this fund to pay for the full cost, the actual cost.
Okay. I will reserve my question for DPW then.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. There's nothing else there? I will move on to, just to highlight a couple of things in the rest of the budget here. Community Development Services starts on page 121, and Erin is here. Workforce Development Corporation, as I've mentioned previously, that is on page 122, and they'll be before you, I think, later this week. And then finally, the last page is 123, and this is the funding that is submitted for tourism and art, sent over to the Anorundel County Conference and Visitors Bureau, as well as our Arts Council, per state law, and that is the annual hotel tax contributions to them. And with that, I don't have anything else to present, so I'm happy to answer any other questions.
I'm going to ask you a very broad, open question.
Okay.
Do y'all anticipate, moving forward, that you, at any time in the next year, you would need to ask for anything supplemental in this category?
I never anticipate that I would need to ask for anything in addition. Absolutely not.
Is this an area, have we done supplementals for the county executive, CIO, in the past? We've been pretty well covered with the contingency fund and everything.
Contingency fund usually covers things, and then obviously, if something special comes up, and it's usually a conversation is had beforehand. So I'm not anticipating anything like that. We try to plan for what we think is coming.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we go back to the, too many, too many pieces of paper. The public campaign financing category. We passed legislation, and we are, there has been a committee that has stood up to recommend an amount.
Yes.
Does the county plan on creating a program that is then assigned to the Board of Elections? Right, you know, as campaign season is heating up, there's no candidate, there's no program that candidates know that we even have this, that we did that statutory work. Is there, is there a plan for the administration to actually present a program?
I can answer that.
For possible candidates?
The short answer is yes. We have been working with State Elections Board on the program, as well as the webpages we'll need, and the work in the Office of Finance that they will need in order to be prepared to administer these funds. So the answer is yes, and I don't have a date for you when we'll be able to announce launching that, but it's soon. We obviously know that it is campaign season, so yes.
That legislation was passed a long time ago.
I understand that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? That looks like all we have for you to.
Thank you for your time, Ms. One.
Thank you. Next up, we have Anorundel Economic Development Corporation. All right. Okay. Give it a minute.
All right, Ms. Gowen.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Hummer, members of the council. Amy Gowen here, President and CEO of Anorundel Economic Development Corporation. With me today is Lisa Grunner, who handles our budget and a number of other things, as our Vice President of Administration. And also here today from my team is our COO, Wes McQuillam, and our Vice President of Finance, Stephen Promash, if you have any questions. So I was going to start today by just starting with our brand-new mission, vision, and values for the corporation. So as many of you know, we've been doing a strategic plan, and as of very recently, we have revised our mission to foster diverse economic growth by empowering businesses, expanding employment opportunities, and revitalizing communities. As the go-to partner, we connect businesses in Anorundel with the key resources to thrive. We also have created a new vision for the organization, and we now have four core values that we feel really encapsulate who we are as a team and the value that we provide to businesses and to the county in Anorundel. And that's connectivity, responsiveness, creativity, and excellence. Won't go through them all today, but I look forward to hopefully briefing all of you on the strategic plan and talking more about that in the future. The next slide shows our org chart. Not many changes here. You can see our management team highlighted in blue. We're not requesting any new positions this year. We have a really strong team in place. And so we'll move on to the next slide. As I said, our budget is a maintenance of effort. We're seeking a total of a little over $2.89 million, most of which goes towards general operations, salaries, financial services, and some support for our agricultural programs. So in addition to the many programs and services that we provide directly to the business community, I did want to highlight the ways in which we support the county directly with advice, you know, kind of professional services related to economic development, community development revitalization. Last year, we served on and/or led 11 different county boards or commissions, which we have listed up there. We went out to the stakeholder advisory committees for the regional planning process with economic data and level setting in terms of, you know, looking at rezoning various properties. We're the lead agency on 41 actions from Plan 2040, and then we support, and we're a support on a number of other ones. So I wanted to highlight some of those. This year, a big project that we did for the county was managing an RFP for 7409 BNA Boulevard. And so we managed the RFP process, and we're now assisting the county with the negotiations for the master development agreement. That'll be coming before you all soon. And we've also been assisting the county with branding, development, and implementation of the PAVE program, the Procurement, Access, and Vendor Equity Program. This is not an exhaustive list by any means, but I just wanted to highlight the resources that we provide to the county, since you're all very familiar with what we do with the business community. So in terms of just kind of new initiatives last year, because again, I know you're familiar with our typical programs, but if you could go, I'm going to just hit on some of the new things from last year. So in the fall, we contracted with a national community economic development consulting firm, Fourth Economy, to kick off a strategic plan for the corporation. We don't currently have a strategic plan. It is absolutely a best practice for economic development organizations and nonprofits in general to have a strategic plan. So we wanted to build one with a lot of stakeholder engagement. So with our consultants, we engaged about 70 stakeholders, including county officials. Some of you were all part of this process, industry leaders, community partners. And we have now a draft strategic plan that identifies some core growth areas for us that looks at promising practices and compares us at some of our other jurisdictions to identify areas where we may look to grow or expand. And so that plan is being reviewed by staff and a steering committee right now, and we're planning to release that like late June. And so I would definitely welcome the opportunity to brief each of you on that when you come up for air after the budget and when it's finalized. In terms of revitalization, I know everyone's familiar with our Anorundel Community Reinvestment Fund that we've had for a while. But as of 2023 budget, the county gave us $100,000 for a town center revitalization manager, and that's really helped to launch a number of redevelopment revitalization initiatives for the corporation. We've taken that $100,000 annual investment. We brought in $450,000 in year one, and we brought in over $500,000 this year. We got $500,000 in DHCD grants, and then we got another over $250,000 from the FSK, which I'll talk about in another slide. But through this, we've been able to launch a number of placemaking initiatives, many of which are in Glen Burnie Town Center. There's a branding, you'll see the signage and the wayfinding throughout Glen Burnie now that we led. We issued an RFP and selected a local artist to do a mural on the Rotary Park. And we're now contracting with a national urban design firm to lead the activation of the Glen Burnie Better Plaza placemaking project, which is going to launch on June 6th, June 7th. I mentioned we were able to take advantage of the, so the FSK money that was from the private sector, the Baltimore Tough Maryland Strong funding that the governor was able to secure, we applied for and received some of that funding, and we were able to pull down about $278,000 for Glen Burnie. And this is going to go for AEDC to operate the farmers markets this year, as well as other beautification efforts in the town center and a new gateway sign. So we're really fortunate, and we're thankful that we have this town center revitalization manager, but for that position, we would not be able to pull down all this leverage that to bring in this extra resources that we wouldn't otherwise have and have the ability to administer and report on and handle all this funding. So we just wanted to showcase that. So we just wanted to show, showcase that. And then I mentioned the FSK bridge funding. In addition to that money that we received for Glen Burnie, we also received 1 million for grants to businesses that were affected by the bridge collapse and we're in the process of awarding all that money, all to Anarundel businesses. And then we received another, a little over 200,000 for what we're calling a Bridges to Business Program, which offers business counseling workshops and business expos. I want to just mention some of the expanded marketing. I feel like with the, with the hiring of our new Vice President of Communications, we've really taken our marketing efforts from good to great. I mean, it's just been, just really have stepped it up. We now have a community impact report that we sent out. Hopefully you had a chance to look at. We had our first one last year, just highlighting everything that we've done within the community. We now have an attraction pitch deck. We have a new sponsorship partnership program that we launched to help to bring in private revenue, to help offset our expenses. And so we're really expanding these areas and you can just, I mean, you can't really see the infographic, but the reach that we're getting is just phenomenal and, and the click rates. And we're basically looking at our analytics every month and seeing, you know, really strategically targeting different markets for different types of promotions. Finally, Select USA. I'm headed there right after this. So Select USA is the nation's largest foreign direct investment event. We had a small presence there last year, but the governor has invested money towards this as of last year. And now Department of Commerce has a very large exhibitor booth and they have invited us with seven other counties to co-exhibit with them. So the governor will be there today. We will be there with Maryland Department of Commerce and a number of the larger counties within the region to try to attract businesses to the state of Maryland and primary to, to Anarundel County. And so that's something that's kind of new for us and we're hoping to really try to lean in and expand on some of these attraction efforts as opportunities come up. Existing programs, I know you all know what we do, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about all of the wonderful programs that we provide to the business community. In terms of our small women, minority, veteran owned businesses, I know you're aware of the IDP program. We had our 14th cohort that we just ended. We did last year, our first cohort entirely in Spanish and we're going to offer that again. I think we're first in the state to do something like that. So we've really been trailblazers with that program. And then of course, our vote program. In total, we've injected over 22 million into local businesses through our vote program. We financed over 180 loans, created over 2,000 jobs, 60 million in capital investment. And the next slide shows just our numbers over the last couple of years. So you'll see we had a record breaking all time lending high this, this past year with 3.7 million in vote loans. That was about a million more than we did in 2024 and that had been a level setting year. So just a lot of interest and kudos to my team for just, we still have the same amount of staff and they're just, the volume's increasing, increasing. So thank you to Steve and his team. In terms of ag, I think last year we refreshed what was our mini grant program and we've now rebranded it, the ABIG program, the Rundle Business, I'm sorry, the Ag Business Improvement Grant. And we've been able to double our funding allocated through a partnership with Marbigco. So last year, we awarded eight grants totaling over $50,000 was an increase of about 12,000 from the, the year prior. Historically, we had only done $10,000 a year and it wasn't even fully subscribed. So we're doing five times the amount now, which has been great, great partnership with Marbigco. And then of course, you know, our Rundle Grown Event, we've been growing that as well. We had over 150 attendees last year and 36 sponsors. So it's just getting more and more, attracting more and more attendees and growers and producers and brewers to that each year. In terms of new initiatives, we just have a few new efforts for this year that we, we are going to be funding through the corporation. One is just our ag equipment is in desperate need of maintenance and repair. Utilization has been low because of that. And this is a, while it's, albeit a minor revenue source, it does give us a little bit of extra revenue. So we're going to be repairing our equipment and hoping to be able to reinvigorate that program. In January, we're going to be launching, launching our first annual business leadership and networking expo. So this is going to be a really large event. It's bringing together businesses and executives. We're going to do networking panels, inspirational features, interactive workshops. So this is going to be a very large Anarundel focus, but also, you know, regionally focused event for our business community. And then I'm probably what I'm most excited about is refreshing our website. I know it doesn't sound super exciting, but it's very dated. When we have a new program that we want to highlight, we are very limited in the flexibility and where we can put it on a page. And, and so it needs to be refreshed, not only from like a backend perspective, but through the strategic plan. We did have the consultant look at other jurisdictions and best practices out there and we now have some examples of where we want to take it. And one thing where I feel like we can really beef up is having a site selection component for site selectors and real estate professionals that are potentially looking for properties and having that information about properties, about real estate, about the zoning and the permitting readily available. And so we have some best practices that are coming out of the strategic plan and we want to implement them through our new website redesign. So I'm excited to kick that off in the beginning of this fiscal year and it'll give us additional flexibility. And so with that, I'll just end by reiterating that, you know, while I did highlight all the new things that we've done and that we're, you know, trying to engage in, of course, as you know, if you follow us in social media, you know, we're out every day, boots on the ground with our businesses, providing the same level of support that we have, strengthening strategic partnerships all over the region, you know, partnering with GBC and, you know, the BWI partnership and Fort Meade Alliance. So I think, you know, looking at the totality of everything and when you consider the amount of work and all the services we're providing with such a small team, it's really a high return on investment. So we thank you for your continued support and consideration of our budget request. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am sort of grateful that the impact that you guys have. I think what a lot of folks don't realize is how economic development really is like the secret sauce that can help our government go from one level to the, to the next level. Can you, can you just talk briefly on your relationships with the, the Chamber of Commerce and how you are integrated indoor? Because we have what, six? In the county and how sort of we were leveraging them to sort of aid in what you're doing so on and so forth?
Yep. We, I mean, we work very closely with the chambers. Each on, we have a staff member that is, serves on the board of directors of each of the six chambers, which really helps with integration of programming because they're, they're there where the boards are making decisions. Wes works very closely with them as well. And so we do a lot of cross promoting, you know, we, you know, anytime we're trying to get any information out to our businesses, we use them as a vehicle to help us promote resources, programs, et cetera. And then of course, you know, anytime we meet with a new business, we refer them over to the chamber to get connected and, you know, we work with them on ribbon cuttings and all that kind of stuff too. But yes, there's a lot of integration.
And is there anything that, if you had a magic wand? I know, I know every department was, you know, had a magic. If there was like some either capability or tool where economic development, if they had that, it would really sort of set them to the next level. I mean, if you've already stated within your, your plan for this upcoming fiscal year, that's great, but if there's something long-term that can really aid you all in being sort of.
Well, I think, I'm going to answer quickly, but I, when our strategic plan comes out, it, it identifies a few different opportunities of growth for us. And so, you know, like I said, I, I think it would be, I'm going to really welcome the opportunity to sit down with each of you and brief you on that. But I think business attraction is one, that, that's an area of expansion that we could really lean into. There's a lot of, and I think commerce is, you know, the, the governor is starting to target specific industries. A lot of them are core industries in our county. And I think leveraging that and partnering with commerce in, in strategic ways is an area where I think we could grow. And then I think with revitalization and redevelopment, there's, you know, I think now that we have this town center and we're doing this revitalization work, there's a lot of opportunity there to like expand that reach across the county and grow our capacity there. And then we are looking at, you know, potential for like, you know, redevelopment projects like 7409 and, you know, maybe moving and moving in that direction in terms of supporting the county with redevelopment efforts as well.
Thank you, thank you much.
Ms. Picker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, you've answered a lot. I didn't really have any questions. I just want to say thank you for the work of EDC and certainly in the Glen Burnie Town Center, but also the work in the Odenton Town Center. And I'm obviously excited to see 7409 coming together. Do we have a sense of when we might be more public with that conversation?
I think we will, this week you'll, will, will be more public. Very soon.
Thank you. That's been a, a labor of love of mine since.
Yes.
Those first tours in June of 2019. So it's exciting to see it all coming together.
Yes, it is very exciting. Thank you for your support on everything Glen Burnie as well. It's been a lot.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a question. I just want to thank you and the entire team, those in the back too. You all come out to ribbon cuttings, as you mentioned, but there's so much more that you do behind the scenes to help small businesses open and be able to have those ribbon cuttings. It's, I couldn't list the variety of services that you provide to each individual business when you do, but I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ravi.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask about one line in the budget book on page 116. I think our chief administrative officer may have referenced this, but I just wanted to see if I could get a little bit more detail. There's a reduction for the grant fund chief ad and there's a bullet point, but I'm just wondering if there's any more detail.
Yeah.
That you could offer.
I think those were just the two grants that we had last year that we've expended. So it was the facade improvement, D H C D money that we had last year for, I believe it was the facade improvement and project restore that we've expended.
Okay, and those grants were not available again or?
We did, we, I think we, we, well, the project restore, we didn't get this year.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you all very much. Always great to hear all the things you're doing. And next up, we have the State's Attorney's Office.
Good morning. Kyle Madden from the Budget Office. You can find the State's Attorney's Budget on page 328 of your proposed budget book. And I'll turn it over to the State's Attorney's Office for their presentation.
Good morning. I'm Ann Colt Light, State's Attorney for Anarundel County. And to my left is Deputy State's Attorney Jessica Dagel, who does our budget every year and works with the County Budget Office. So she's going to do our presentation.
Good morning. Hey, I'm Jessica Dagel. I'm one of the Deputy State's Attorneys. Thank you very much for having us here today. I'm not sure why it's not coming up. Because I tested it this morning, just to let you guys know.
Be down below what says PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Who's controlling? There we go. And go up to play. Play at the top left. Yeah. Very good.
Thank you for your patience. So the, the State's Attorney's Office, as everybody knows, we are committed to justice by employing the highest ethical standards and vigorously prosecuting the guilty and protecting the innocent and representing the interests of this, of the state of Maryland in criminal cases here in the county. The state, the state, what I'm going to talk, what I'm going to talk about today is really more about our major accomplishments and our key objectives and then a little bit about our budget. And the reason for that is we, our budget really isn't changing much from what it was last year. So we, we aren't really asking for much more. And in fact, the couple of things that we did ask for that the Budget Office has said that, that we should be getting are offset by savings and other parts of our budget. So any increase is really due to more salary than anything else. So just a little bit about our office. I think it's important to know that the State's Attorney's Office is made up of people. We have, I think we have 139 positions that are funded by the county, but we have about 146 people who work for us because we have a few part-time positions that are contractual. And we also have some grant funded positions that are outside of that number that the, that the, that's in the county budget in terms of like position controlled positions. We have four locations, 57 attorneys, two of those are part-time. And we have really worked hard, our office has really worked hard in the last five or six years to increase the number of advocates, victim witness advocates that we are able to have to help victims as they sort of nav, as they navigate the criminal justice system. This is just our org chart that indicates that obviously the elected State's Attorney is above, is, is in charge of the entire office. Most of, all of the felony, most of the felony trial teams and all of the advocates, the entire advocate program and also circuit court support staff fall under Deputy Brian Marsh and pretty much the rest of everything else falls under me in terms of district court, our body worn camera unit, which a lot of jurisdictions around the state still call and ask us about and want to come and see what we did to make body worn camera footage, something that was easier for our office to deal with. So those things, plus as Ann said a few minutes ago, the budget and finances for our office fall under me. So when you look at the key objectives on, I think it's page 328 is what Kyle said of the, of the budget book, one of our objectives is our commitment to the community. And so one of the things that we do is each year we host an event to honor the victims, honor victims during National Crime Victims Rights Week. These pictures are from last year's ceremony that was held in April of 2024. We do believe that honoring people who step forward to support victims helps enhance public confidence in the criminal justice system. By supporting each other, we support a stronger and more compassionate society. So we have some pictures here. As I said, we honored some, some women who had been victims of a sex offender who came forward to testify at the trial of, of a fourth victim so that the, so that the court and the jury was able to understand this was not the first time this man had done this kind of thing. And so, so that's the group that you see all the way on the left. In the middle, these are three women who were paddling on the Chesapeake Bay and they saw something happening on shore and were, when they realized the next day that a, a woman's body had been found at that location, they called and, and shared what they had seen, which led the police to be able to actually find the person who had committed that crime, which was the, the son of the victim. So they, they received an award last year. In addition, every year we give the Warren B. Duckett Junior Memorial Commitment to Justice Award. Warren Duckett was the elected State's Attorney for, for a long period of time. He then became a judge and so it's named after him. And last year, we gave it to Ray Leonard, who works with Luminous Health at the Anarundel Medical Center. She's the manager of the abuse and domestic violence, sexual assault programs at the hospital. So that's one of the ways that we make sure that our office is raising the confidence of the public in, in, by strengthening collaboration with different agencies and making sure that that people can see what it is that we're, that we do in our office. Another thing we do, another way that we are committed to the community is you'll see on the left, Brian Marsh, the other, the other deputy, he. you'll see on the left, Brian Marsh, the other deputy. He does spend quite a bit of time going to different communities and presenting programs in order to show crime prevention strategies and help to increase community safety and just bring more awareness to the community about the different crimes that might be targeted towards specific people. And so in this photograph, he's actually at the Brightview Senior Living in Severna Park, talking about senior fraud prevention. We also worked last year with the clerk's office in the courthouse to provide gifts for 150 local families through the Anarona County Christmas Angels Program. That's probably one of the favorite things that we do every year. It's a lot of fun to buy the gifts for the different families and then to pack up a van and take all the gifts over. And you'll see on the right, there's Ann Leitis with, she's a huge animal lover. Sure, everybody knows that. But one of the caring canines program dogs came to visit us. And so there we are. And what they're used for is they will sit at the feet of a child witness who has, while that child is testifying, so the jury doesn't even know that the dog is there, but it's just a comforting presence in order to help people who have to talk about the most horrific thing that's happened to them in front of a bunch of strangers.
I just wanted to give a shout out to Nadine Chen, who's actually in the audience, right? And she's the same woman in the picture who's there with the caring canine. So I thought I'd just give her a shout out because obviously it's the canine, but also the owner.
So we, to use the caring canines, we do have to get court approval. And so we do have a couple of cases that are coming up where we have received that approval, and we will be using this program to assist our victims as they, again, have to talk about these things in public to people. Another thing that actually our office is very proud of is when Ann won in 2019, one of the first things that she did was she hired somebody who had experienced writing grants. And so with that person being with our office, we have really, over the last six years, increased the grant funding that our office receives. And so, and we think that's a major accomplishment because all the grant money that we get not only helps us provide more people to help and assist victims of crime, but it also impacts how much money we end up asking the county to provide to us. So in FY25, we actually received increased funding from the Victim of Crime Act grant. That came to us through the Maryland Governor's Office of Crime Prevention and Policy. And it was about 68,000, it was over 68,000 additional dollars that we had not been receiving in the years prior to that. And that allowed us to build on a FY24 grant that gave us the ability to hire a dedicated bilingual advocate for our district court. And so this slide here just talks a little bit about the VOCA grant and shows you the two people who are now members of our office as contractual grant-paid advocates who we did not have prior to the ability, prior to getting that increased grant funding. Again, the main mission of our office is to prosecute crime. And so just a few headlines from some cases from last year. Not all, not all the cases make the paper, but we have had great success in cases specifically involving violence and sexual assault in the last year and against women and children, and also with what we would call felony-level traffic offenses. And so just a real quick couple of things. There was, last year, we had a Glen, there was a Glen Burnie driver who struck a young couple. The wife was killed. The husband was critically injured. They were high school sweethearts, had literally just gotten married, and were walking home after having gotten some ice cream that day when they were struck by this man who had a, who was speeding pretty fast in a 30 mile per hour zone. And we were able to get a sentence, a good sentence for him based on what he did and his prior convictions. There was also another drunken driver who was responsible for a three-vehicle crash in Glen Burnie. He received a sentence of 15 years. That crash left one man dead and also injured severely his own, the defendant's own nephew. He had a prior, he had a prior conviction and had actually asked somebody to blow into his interlock system in order to get his car started so he could drive that day. So we, and then finally here, there was a karate instructor from Hanover. A student had stepped forward, and when that, to talk about some sexual abuse that had happened to that student, and when that happened, someone who'd been a student from years before had the courage to step forward. And so in that case, the state was able to secure a 15-year prison sentence for the sexual abuse of two of that man's students. We also, last year, had a couple of other cases that I just want to briefly mention. There was a Glen Burnie man who had sexually abused a household member for several months when she was eight years old. Again, a lot of our cases involve, involve people who don't come forward until years after something happens. And that happens a lot in sexual offense cases, both of adults and also of victims. And sometimes that means that the State's Attorney's Office does have to hire outside expert witnesses in order to explain to a jury why there's a delay in a disclosure. So one of the things that the State's Attorney's Office has asked for this year is a little bit of extra money based on a few cases that we know are coming up in the next fiscal year, that we do expect to have some expert testimony that we would have to pay for. And then finally, there was a resolution in the case of the light rail operator who didn't wait the appropriate amount of time before crossing over the road, and a St. Francis football player, who was actually somebody that was being recruited around the country, was killed. And so we were able to get a sentence in that case that was appropriate. So another one of our key objectives is making sure that we have highly trained attorneys who know exactly what it is that they're doing. And in addition to that, I've already talked a little bit about how we want to make sure that the community understands that it's, we don't just prosecute crime, but we also try to get, try to get people to understand how to prevent crime from happening. And so just a few awards that we received over the last year. You'll see in here in the middle, that's Brian Marsh, holding his Jay Karan Public Service Award. It's presented by the Maryland Bar Foundation. He received that at the end of last year, and it's for, it's presented annually to a government or public interest attorney known for selflessly serving the public good and furthering the goals of better government and societal standards. And we know that the fact that he goes out and talks to a lot of community programs is one of the reasons why he received that. In addition, one of our staff, Sean Fox, was awarded the Victoria F. Gelfman Legal Excellence Award. This was last summer at the Maryland State's Attorneys Conference in Ocean City. And it is, it honors a rising Maryland Assistant State's Attorney who advances prosecutorial excellence. Those chosen for the award have demonstrated a firm commitment to continued service as a prosecutor, to using the highest ethical standards, outstanding leadership, and commitment to community. And our office was honored to have Sean receive that award last year. And finally, Moreau Williamson, who is pictured in both of these photographs, she's an attorney in our narcotics trial team, who not only holds offenders accountable, but she also works on prioritizing treatment and rehabilitation. And she has received several awards in the last year. One was the May Abraham Service Award, which is given by the Ashley Addiction Treatment Center. That highlights the achievement, the achievements of women who have worked tirelessly to improve the lives of those affected by substance abuse disorders and to inspire others to follow in their footsteps. She was also selected by the Daily Record as one of Maryland's Top 100 Women, again, recognizing her leadership, her community service, and her mentoring. And she was recognized by Leadership Anna Rundle for her role as President of the Board of the Chrysalis House, which is a substance abuse rehabilitation facility in Crownsville, offers inpatient and outpatient treatment to women. And again, one of the things about Moreau is even though she's a narcotics, she's assigned to the narcotics team, recovery and recovery from substance abuse issues is really one of the, one of the top things that drives her. So I'll just end with this picture of Ann. This is at Purple Light Night Event in Annapolis, and she is surrounded in this picture by many of the advocates that we have working for our office, including some, again, who are here because we have been able to secure grants. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah.
Glad you could join.
Well, me too. Thank you. So I'm looking at your budget on page 329 of the Budget Book, and it looks like the total increase year over year is $989,000. I may have missed when you said this earlier in the presentation, and I don't have a preview copy of your presentation, but it says in the Budget Book that this is attributable to pay packages, benefits, and changes in grant funding. Can you break down that number a little bit more into what exactly is going into that?
The vast majority of it is the pay package.
So how much of that is the pay package of the 989? Well, if you want to look at personal services, 997,200. How much of that is pay package?
Well, I can get back to you with more specifics, but right now, it's, a million of it is the increase to the PSC calculation.
One million of it?
Yeah.
So the 997,200 is entirely attributable to just pay packages?
And then at the beginning, when she was speaking about her budget, they do have line item increases, but they're being funded with savings. So it's more of a shift like from one line item to another. So yes, but the vast majority, if not the entire increase is in the PSC calculation.
Okay, so the savings being the copy machine costs and general office supplies that you referenced in supplies and materials? Is that what you're talking about when you say savings?
Yes, there's savings in general office supplies, copy machine supplies. But again, I can give you a, I can email you the specifics.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair, may I?
May we supplement, Mr. Volkey?
Sure, go ahead, please.
Mr. Dagel has additional information.
So one of the things that we did, I think it was last year, was we redid all of the contracts for our copier machines, which reduced the monthly payment and also reduced the amount we had to pay per printed page. And so that's driving a lot of the savings in office supply, in supplies and materials. That's where a lot of that comes from. And in addition to that, you're, there, you'll see at the very bottom of the page, talks about grants, contributions, and other. The State's Attorney's Office previously had two different grants that required a cash match. So we had two different grants where we had to make sure that the county set aside enough money to pay for the balance of costs for particular people who were on grants. Based on what the Governor's Office has done over the last year with the VOCA grant, there's been a number of different changes that have changed the way they look at that grant. And so the county no longer has to put aside cash match funds for that grant. And so that's where a lot of that decrease, and actually all of that decrease really in that particular bucket comes from, is no longer, so it's a savings to the county by not having to do that. And so that's where some of the, that's how some of these things kind of shift around a little bit.
I see that, yeah. It's about $58,000 between the grants and the supply savings. So those two things obviously decrease some of what the ask is, but with the personal services, that's the $997,000 increase. So I'm assuming that's all the pay package. And I guess I'm just looking for a little more detail on that to try to understand exactly what the scope is of that, because that's, I will have to look at historical numbers to see how that compares to years past, but that seems like a significant increase just on that one line item. So that's why I'm curious, especially when you have the vacancies that have been noted in the presentation, or I think it was in the presentation early on. Actually, sorry, the Auditor's Office shared that with us, with the vacancies, two have been filled, but there are still four remaining vacancies. So looking at that in terms of the growth, I'm trying to figure that out.
Okay.
So I don't know if you can give me more now, but if not, just get back to me on that if you can.
Yep, absolutely.
Perfect.
Ann, yes, just to follow that up, our budget analysis says that you currently have six vacancies with two being filled this month, and the other four still open. Can you tell us how long those have been open?
So we've, the four that are still open are attorney vacancies. And I think the one that's been open the longest has been open since September. And, but then there are others that have been open more recently. I think we had an attorney leave in March, maybe mid-March. And so, I mean, I can't tell you exactly for all of them, but I know one of them has been open since September, and one is a much newer one. The two other positions that you're talking about, we actually had somebody start last week, so that position is already filled. And then the other one is being filled on Thursday of this week, I think. It's either Thursday of this week, actually, it's Thursday of next week would be the start date. And that's for an advocate position that has been open maybe a month.
Okay. So nothing super long-term there?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So this is the sort of budget somewhat related question, but obviously there have been a couple recent high-profile cases where there have been issues with the Office of the State's Attorney. There's the one that I just saw a few days ago involving this couple in Edgewater and the situation there. There was the case in front of Judge Wax, which happened within the last couple of months. You talked about having highly trained attorneys. You talked about that being the model of the office. I guess my question is, what's going on? What is the situation where we are seeing cases that either the State's Attorney is being removed from the case, or the judge is finding that there has been some sort of prosecutorial issue, I think is what Judge Wax said. Whether you all agree or disagree with that, that's what the bench said. And clearly, that's what's been said again with this Edgewater couple. We're being asked to fund another million dollars in money to your office for personal services, for people in your office, and yet we keep getting these headlines. So if you all can speak to that, because I didn't see that in the presentation.
Well, Mr. Volkey, of course, we're not allowed to publicly comment on cases. And so currently, there is an interlocutory appeal that has been filed. And so I, unfortunately, when you have headlines, I'm not permitted to talk about them. And so we have a retrial in the one case that Judge Wax was on, set for September, and the other case is on appeal. So, you know, that's why we have appellate courts. But thank you, sir.
All right. Any further questions for State's Attorney's Office? All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out today, for all you do. Next up is Arundel Community Development Services, Inc., ACDS.
The CEO of Arundel Community Development Services. I'm excited to introduce you all to our relatively new Chief Operating Officer and Chief Financial Officer, Roy Ennis. Roy's been with us since early December, and we're really excited to have him on board and brings a lot of private sector as well as nonprofit finance and accounting and HR experience. And also with me, I have Beth Brush, our Chief Planning Officer, who many of you already know. I am excited to share with you some of our funding. As you know, we administer federal, county, state funds on behalf of the county in all things housing and community development related. We also administer the grants portion of the county's Video Lottery Terminal Special Fund and the Laurel Race Course Impact Fund, which are described in the budget books on, they're first summarized on page 98. And it sounds like some of you had some questions, which I'm happy to answer, which I can do at the end of my presentation. This morning, though, my presentation is going to mostly focus briefly highlighting the federal and county funds in my budget. And that's summarized on page 121 of the Budget Book, if you would like to find that. And it's also summarized on this slide. First, the Community Services Fund includes over $8 million in federal funds, mostly through the Community Services Fund includes over $8 million in federal funds, mostly through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And you can see the breakout on my summary slide. It includes community development block grant funds, emergency solutions grant funds, home investment partnership funds, and then the competitive continuum of care funds, which is called, I think, Transitional Housing Grant in your budget book. Also, we have our housing trust funds and the county general funds, and then the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. So on the federal funds, I just want to note that this is not yet final. We're waiting for final numbers from HUD on these funds. As you may know, the federal budget, or the federal government passed the FY25 federal budget, and that helps fund our FY26 budget. We're waiting on HUD staff to crunch our numbers for our entitlement funds. So we're expecting that to come sometime in mid-May, so any day now. And we're hoping that it will be level funded, because the continuing resolution did make level funding appropriations. The one exception to that is the Competitive Continuum of Care Fund. That number, actually, we got an increase in those grants, mostly to account for inflation in terms of some of our subrecipient staff costs, and also for the rental vouchers that go through that program and the increase in rents that we've seen. And just big kudos to Beth and her team for putting together that competitive application that involves bringing over 60 of our stakeholders that are working to end homelessness in Anarundel County. Today, I'm going to mostly...oh, well, before I go on to the Housing Trust Fund, I do want to just highlight, sorry, back in here, on our county general fund, we are requesting $4.25 million. That's a slight increase over last year, which accounts for the Housing Attainability Act. ACDS is going to be implementing that on behalf of the county, along with planning and zoning and inspections and permits. And so that accounts for a new staff position, as well as some existing staff positions that are grant-funded, where those positions are going to have to pitch in and help administer the first year of this program. Otherwise, that's the majority of the new funding under that line item. So, moving to the Housing Trust Fund, I'm going to talk about kind of the different buckets of funding. And these are funds that we administer...we've been administering for the last couple years on behalf of the county. And this year, our budget includes almost $12 million. The Housing Trust Fund has done well in the last couple years, so that's a good thing. We have more resources to add to our toolbox. And so part of what I'm going to do is just talk a little bit about some of the success that we've had on this. The big bucket is affordable rental housing development. So I'm really excited. We've been able to close...in the last two years, we've been able to commit over $15 million of the $16 million that's been allocated to this, to projects that are preserving and creating new affordable housing units. And so in the last...in FY24, we closed on seven projects. In FY25, we closed on four projects. And you can see kind of in the presentation, some of the results of that. In addition, for next year, we have three new projects that are in our pipeline that are creating new units, one in Odenton, one in the...in kind of the Brooklyn Park, Glen Burnie area, and one in the Wall Chapel Millersville area. So, I'm sorry, Gambrels area, excuse me. So we're really excited about that, and we're continuing to look for new affordable housing development opportunities. And we've got some projects to forward-looking in the project...in the pipeline, where we're revitalizing some of the public housing communities in our area as well. Also eviction prevention, we continue to manage a very, a very small streamlined program compared to what we were managing during the height of COVID, when we were getting all that federal funding from the U.S. Treasury. We feel that there is still a big need for eviction prevention. As you can see in these statistics, if you look at the statistics year over year, the number of evictions that are actually happening in the county hasn't gone down. So without this program and the evictions that we're able to present, or prevent, rather, we've actually had a really, you know, successful time preventing certain evictions. So we prevented 952 in 2024. And we're looking to be...we're looking at preventing around 600 in this current fiscal year. Again, it's a reduced program, because we just don't have the volume of funds from the federal government. But we do think that the need is there, as we continue to produce new units to help ameliorate the affordable housing crisis on the rental side of things. Next, we have been able to successfully fund our tenant-based rental assistance expansion in the county. So we're able to use some trust funds to help people who might need vouchers to go and find affordable units. Our moving home program, I'm really proud of, we've been able to help about 80 households in the last two years. The idea is that this is temporary assistance, where people transition after one year of getting this assistance. And the idea is that they're able to increase and expand their income so that they can take on payment of their rent on their own after that one-year period. So we've been able to graduate about half of the program participants, you know, after their first year on the program. And then of those, about 85% have successfully maintained or increased their income and been able to maintain their housing. And this case study is just a great example of us working with our partners. We had a woman who had...she had children. She was making about $10,000 a year. She got a voucher. She got case management from us. She worked with workforce development, got her skills improved. She got a custodial position and then worked her way up as a manager at the local McDonald's. And so now she's successfully, you know, paying for her own rent. So it's a great...it's a good success story. We're also helping the Housing Commission expand some of their housing vouchers for people who are formerly experiencing homelessness. And then under our operating costs for transitional housing, this really helps us expand next-step housing opportunities for people who might have different special needs. We're funding two group homes for people who've exited incarceration and are getting on their feet and getting some case management support and job training. And then also, we're supporting the Patriot House, which is operated by Arundel House of Hope, and that's serving formerly homeless veterans. And so we're really excited to be able to continue to support that. And looking ahead, we're looking for new...in the next year, we plan to expand this so we can help another group home, and also partnering with the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families to help them fund a group home for youth that are experiencing homelessness. Under affordable housing, affordable homeownership opportunities, you know, our team, we have a really robust housing homeownership counseling program that we...that is funded by the county. We're out in the community. We have a lot of people enrolled in our homeownership counseling class. We have low- and moderate-income home buyers who are prospective home buyers who want to buy. It's very difficult to find homes. I'm very hopeful that the Housing Attainability Act will be another excellent tool in the toolbox to bring some homes online. But in the meantime, we do have this closing cost and down payment assistance program, where we're funding our moderate-income home buyers who are making about 100% of area median income, and they get down payment and closing cost assistance. We're also partnering with nonprofit developers to produce actual hard units that have some subsidy in them, so that makes them affordable to this market. We're partnering this year with Habitat for Humanity of the Chesapeake. They haven't done a project in Anarundel County in a while, so we're really excited about this. It's going to be in the Severn area, and it's going to produce five units for moderate-income home buyers, making 80% area median income and below. And then we continue, we're developing Glendale Terrace, which is a workforce housing development in the Glen Burnie area. So that kind of concludes the Housing Trust Fund. Next, I just wanted to briefly highlight that we're also, in addition to the Video Lottery Terminal Funds and Laurel Race Course Funds, similarly, we've taken on administration of the Community Reinvestment and Repair Funding on behalf of the county. This is a portion of the revenue that comes in from adult recreational cannabis use, and then it comes down to the local jurisdictions. There is an 11-member commission that is guiding the administration of these funds and making recommendations to the administration. The administration has tapped ACDS to administer it, because we are their grant administrator on a lot of these community development funds. And so that application is up now. We are...we're pooling together FY25 funds. There was about $1 million that was allocated in FY25, and we're seeking $775,000 from FY26 funds to then be allocated. The application process is live now, and the applications are due on Friday. We've seen a lot of interest in that. There are probably over 100 applications that have already been initiated, and we're bracing to see how many get submitted on Friday. And also, I want to mention, in addition to those special grant funds, we also administer...we're pleased to be the administrator for the county executive's office for the community support grants. That's about $2 million, and that's included in our county general funds budget. I didn't highlight that, but I think maybe some of the grant applicants that you're all asking about might be under that, too. So, anyway, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yes, I did ask about the Literacy Council earlier. I know they requested $30,000, I believe. Was that fully funded in this budget?
So I did, I did look that up. So that is funded in the community support grant process, yes.
Okay.
And it's...I don't, I don't think, I don't...very few organizations were fully funded. We received over, what, 107, 160 applications for $2 million in community support grant funding.
Understood.
So it was not a full funding, I don't believe. But the award notifications will be going out at the end of this month with the caveat that, you know, it's contingent upon the county council passing the budget so that they can gear up and start planning for their FY26 budget and have that in mind. We also have a pretty robust grantee onboarding process where we do a training, a virtual training. So we'll be letting all the applicants know about that.
Wonderful, thank you. Ms. Raviyan.
Thank you. I think you sort of answered the question when you responded to Ms. Fiedler, but I was curious if there is a list that will be published for council members?
Yes. In fact, you know what? Sometimes the auditor asks for those. They didn't ask for it this year. I will get that over to you all today.
Okay.
So you can see the full list.
Thank you. And then I just have one question. This is something that I've sort of tracked over time, and I'm sure you do as well. But we've, you know, over the years, we've been looking at the number of, the shortage number of housing units in the county. And I think the last time I asked about this, it was somewhere in the 12,000 housing units short. And I'm curious, I feel like we're...there's a lot of good work going on in terms of creating new housing. So I'm just curious, what, where would you put that figure these days?
So I haven't done an updated study since that, what, that...that was a very detailed actual survey where I hired a consultant to actually call around.
Gotcha.
And so we kind of do that every few years, so it may be time to look at that again. You know, I do think, you know, in the numbers that I have, you know, we're building new units, which is great. I forget, I think we have, let's see, we're preserving or creating 827 units with the Housing Trust Funds, and then 929 units are going to be preserved because of the pilots that you, the council, approved in the last year. So that doesn't, that's not just new units that we're creating, it's also preservation, because we've got to, like, kind of work double time to make sure we're also not losing any of the units. So I can't tell you exactly where we are in that number, but I think because of market changes, you know, it's probably pretty similar. And we'll be looking at that in the next year or so, like I said. And again, just, you know, our big focus is trying to create these new units.
So you feel like even with all the creation of new units, that hasn't dropped significantly? I mean, maybe the need has increased at the same time as the units have been?
Right.
New units are coming online?
I think, I think that as we look at the new, at the new report in the next year, that will really give us an indication, because it's not like the units went out of...it's not like we lost units in that they went out of use or out of the market. It was because the rents increased such that it was, it was no longer affordable to the people. And that's for people who are earning 60% of area median income and below.
Okay. This, I guess, a related question. I'm not sure if you have an answer. This is maybe a little off-track, too, so I'll try and keep it short. There...what are you seeing in terms of vacancy rates in units that are out there? Is that something that you track at all? Because I just, I know, like, in District 6, in, you know, Annapolis Town Center area, there's actually a significant number of units, but I wouldn't call any of them affordable.
Right.
And so I'm curious, like, you know, do we have any idea what the vacancy rates in those are? Are they...or do we have landlords who are holding on to units, sort of like waiting for the person that can actually afford the, you know, $3,000 a month that come with, you know, a studio apartment?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on the market rate units. I do know that the portfolio that ACDS manages ourselves, we have seen a slight, I would say, a very slight kind of, you know, decrease in demand. And so we've had, you know, our units stayed on the market a little bit longer before we are able to rent them. But it's not a representative sample. And again, I would like to really look at that overall market data that our consultant will be providing in the next year. Is the market softening? I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
I can tell you that the few projects at the Housing Trust Fund and our county funds and our home funds have all helped to leverage in the last few years. For example, Brock Bridge Landing, that I think some of you have emailed me about that. That just, we just had a big grand opening for that. It was lovely. There are no vacancies there. Eagle Park, which is, includes units for older adults. I think that there might be some units that are vacant, but it also includes family units. It depends on the qualifying income of that household. So it's like, you have to find the right, the right renter. But I don't think that they have, they don't, you know, they're leasing up. Little Fitz and is leasing up. You know, there's, there's a lot of demand for these affordable units.
Well, then, I, it sounds like I will be very much looking forward to that next analysis that you guys get.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious, are there certain metrics that determine what the disproportionately impacted areas, and what are those metrics that help you identify those 10 different areas that you have identified?
Sure, that's a great question. And we are awaiting further and more detailed guidance, I think, from the state. So the State Office of Social Equity has put out some initial DIA areas. And what they look at is, my understanding is, they look at the arrest rates during the war on drugs in the 1980s. And that's what they're looking at, was there a disproportionate number of arrests in those communities. And what our local commission did is they took the DIA areas that were given to us by the state based on that data. And we also, we also looked at the proportion of low-income communities that exist today and where there's also a concentration of minority communities, and looked at those areas and added Maryland City and some parts of the Lothian area, because we saw increased, increased low-income needs there that maybe weren't there in the 1980s when they did their initial data. So those are areas that have been selected by the commission as areas for prioritization of putting these funds. And I think, was it you, Councilwoman Ledbetter, that asked about the Boys and Girls Club?
Yes. However, Ms. Anderson did address that. She got to the...
Okay, gotcha.
She read my mind.
Okay, good, okay. Because they are receiving BLT funds as well, but that's for their Severn Club and the operations there.
Right, thank you.
Ms. Picker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for all that you do. Can we go back to the slide with the federal investment for housing that comes into the county?
Mm-hmm.
Do we...I realize that, you explained it beautifully, that the federal FY25 budget is what's feeding the FY26. But are we...where are we most vulnerable for FY27 with the current federal government looking at HUD expenditures across these programs?
So my...and again, all I've seen are news reports on the current administration, federal administration's proposed budget, which of course needs to be vetted and negotiated. federal administration's proposed budget, which of course needs to be vetted and negotiated by Congress. So it's by no means a, a done deal. But my understanding is that that proposed budget zeroes out the Community Development Block Grant Fund, the Home Investment Partnership Fund, and I think also the Continuum of Care Fund, right?
I think it's to a state program.
Okay.
They block grant them to the state.
Yeah, so, and how that will play out, you know, in there it was, the news reports that I was reading was saying that, you know, it would be, you know, transferred to the states. I don't know what proportion the state would be expected to pick up. So, I, I don't know. I, I also know that the Housing Choice Voucher Program was listed for some cuts. That's not included in here. Of course, that goes through our Housing Commission for the county and the Housing Authority City of Annapolis. So, we're watching it very carefully as, as more information comes out from our affiliate, affiliates at the national level. But, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's concern, it's something that we're concerned about, but, you know, also there's, it's a long process. And usually, we don't know until March what our budget is. That's been the trend lately, even though the federal budget is supposed to be passed in October.
Housing Choice vouchers, which obviously don't go through ACDS, like you just stated, you know, it's one of the, it's a long-running standing program within the federal government that has had, you know, bipartisan support for a long time. It is one of the programs that has the most expedient relief for low-income housing needs. So, we'll have to keep our eyes on all of these moving parts going forward. You know, we're not, the federal exposure we have across lots of different areas is But I appreciate all that your team does, and I look forward to watching the Glendale Terrace project come together.
Yeah.
Along with several other things in the, in the hopper. So thank you, and I appreciate your candor today.
Thank you, thanks for your support.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good, it's good seeing you. A quick question, the, your organization probably has one of the hardest jobs because you deal with a economy, and the economics of housing that fluctuates at a very rapid pace where the, the flow of government doesn't sometimes move at the same rate. And so, are there, is there anything we are not doing to assist with? Because we passed a lot of legislation over the last couple of years to, to give you more tools to be able to find ways to, to address some of the housing concerns that we have. Is there anything that we may not have thought of at this point that you think we could help you with, either through this budget or policy-wise, so that we can try to aid in the fluidity of the housing market to address some of these issues we have here locally?
Well, thank you, I appreciate that question. In talking to, you know, a lot of, we work with a lot of nonprofit developers that we help, but then we also work with a lot of market rate, affordable developers. And, and really, what I'm hearing now, you know, big barriers to them developing anywhere, but as well in Anarundale County, is just the high cost. And, you know, land is expensive, but also, you know, with tariffs coming and the construction costs, that's a big, big issue or unknown. And then, thirdly, talking about, you know, the interest rates and just, there's, it's not so much, you know, we don't, you know, we've seen much higher interest rates in the past, but it's kind of the volatility of the interest rates that they're, they're saying. You know, there can always be process improvements that, you know, we work on internally, that we're continuing to do. The state did receive a, a competitive grant from HUD called the Pro-Housing Grant, where they can make, I think they were awarded over $5 million in funds, so, you know, that, to, to sub-grant to local jurisdictions. So they're making some sub-grants available to Anarundale County to, to look at creating some development efficiencies in different areas, so that's exciting. And, and, you know, we'll continue to look at policies. I'm really excited about the Housing Attainability Act and how we can utilize that and how our development, our private developers can utilize that to, to be able to create these affordable units throughout the county.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any further questions for ACDS? Thank you all for all you do.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Anarundale County Public Libraries.
I'd like to make a couple of introductions. First of all, it's great to see everyone here today. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for your ongoing support for the libraries. In just a minute, I'm going to turn it over to our Vice Chair of our Board of Trustees, Demita McDonald. But first, Cedric Grant, to my left, is our Chief Financial Officer. He's been with us since 2020, and he's tremendous. In our, in the audience, we have three people from our executive team. Our Chief Operating Officer is Kathy Hollerback. Kathy manages our branch libraries and public services, programming and outreach, digital experience and circulation services. So she has like, a lot going on in, in her portfolio. Kathleen Sparrow is the Executive Director of the Library Foundation. And I will just point out that September 19th is For the Love of the Library at Bush Annapolis, so we would love to see all of you there. And then Christine Feldman is our Director of Marketing and Communications. With that, I mentioned that Demita McDonald is our Vice Chair. This coming Thursday, she is standing for election to become our new chair. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Demita.
It's a pleasure for me to be here this morning, and thank you for your past support. And I'm going to turn it back over to Skip for our presentation. And, you know, I hope you give it the time and attention it deserves. Thank you.
And, but, well, any of us here will be able to answer questions as, as we go. So I'm going to kind of turn, turn to look at the slides as we go. So we have some fairly new slides. This is Fiscal 24. So you're familiar with this. We, we recreate this every year with, with an update. But just under 50% of county residents have a library card and, and they use their library card. And they, and we also have people who just come into the library without a card and use it just to kind of hang out, meet people. There's all kinds of reasons people don't have a card, but, you know, basically, there's a lot of people using the libraries. And I'll go into some of these statistics a little later, but almost 6 million circulations. That includes our physical print, print books and movies and music, but it also includes the digital checkouts of eBooks and so on. So our capital plan, we're moving ahead with design of the Glen Burnie Library. And so thrilled to be, to be doing that. We had a great community meeting earlier in the year. As you know, Rivera Beach Library opened last year. And this budget proposes $4 million for Brooklyn Park Library, and that's going to be a tremendous benefit to that library. It gets us not only an elevator to make that building handicapped accessible, but it also gets us conference room spaces that, so it kind of expands our ability to, for small groups to meet. It, it really improves the staff areas and the public areas. So that's a, a long overdue project. We're really thrilled that that's happening. Let's see. I want to mention the Millersville Library because that is, that has been in the books. It's, it's zeroed out here because last year it was in year five or six as a project that would be 40,000 square feet, including a 10,000 square foot headquarters annex. We're bursting at the seams that our headquarters building over on Truman Parkway needed another place. But what, what is happening, and this is really a great new development, the Y of Central, well, first of all, Chief Administrative Officer Christine Anderson contacted me because the Y of Central Maryland, and she had been talking about a possibility that we could have a library in this Y. They're planning the Y to be 60,000 square feet, and we can get a 20,000 square foot library there at that Y. And as, as she mentioned earlier, this will be built by the Y, we'll be involved in the design and especially the design of the library part. But there will be a space where you walk in and you'll have access to, to both parts of that, of that facility. So, we're, we're really hopeful, keeping fingers crossed that this will, will work out. But a letter of intent has been signed by the county. As you know, all of our libraries are owned by the county and leased back to the library. So we're, this one will be leased, I think, from the Y. So that's just a great project. We also, we, Mountain Road Library, we had funding last year for a study, and we were all set to, to review a certain area there that we thought was going to be open, and then that, that parcel did not become available. So that money carries forward. We're going to really do our best this year to try to get the study done and, and really pick a place where we can have a permanent Mountain Road Library that would replace the temporary library that's at the Lakeshore Plaza. By the way, that library has been doing significantly more business than we were further out on Mountain Road. It's just in a, an area of Pasadena that, that really is vibrant, and a lot of people come in, a lot of people are discovering the library. So that's been a great success. Now, I'm not going to go item by item here. The county did fund, did, did put into the recommended budget that the county executive put forward for, for parts. And that's, you know, that's there, we're, we're really hoping that you'll, you'll fund that. And later, I'm going to emphasize two or three items that we hope you'll consider seeing if there's a way to get funded. Okay, so Cedric is going to just populate this thing with, with several superlatives. I was looking at the statistics really just last week for, for the Fiscal 23, the state statistics, which by the way are compiled and, and developed as part of the Institute for Museum and Library Services, a federal agency that the Trump administration has proposed eliminating, which is like, just alarm bells are going off like crazy for us about all the things we would lose if, if we lose that agency. But you can see that out of 24 library systems, we were second in total program attendance, just Howard County being first. We were third in the total number of programs. We were the, we were number one in children's program attendance and the number of children's programs. Another thing that's been true for years and years is that we're the, we're the number one interlibrary loan user. So when our people come into the libraries, our staff are highly trained to say, well, we don't have it in our system, but we can get it for you. So 64, almost 65,000 items were, were borrowed from other libraries, primarily through the Marina system in Maryland, but also going out of state as needed. Just a couple of other things, the use of electronic materials is, is really high for us as well. Number four in, in physical item circulation, three in use of eBooks and so on, and then number two in the retrievals using the, the databases. So when I mentioned that, that Kathy oversees our digital experience, that's all the databases and that, and that type of thing. These statistics I just updated, again, from the Fiscal 23 project, and this is in order by the number of staff per 10,000 people. It's sort of an index that, that I created that is, is essentially a per capita index. And again, we're, as you can see, we have five staff. Another, another staffing statistic there that I put up is the number of staff per library. So some libraries, like Hartford, have a lot of libraries compared to their population. But, but at any rate, we're, we're pretty much on the low end of, of those as well as our overall per capita funding. This isn't to complain about our funding because we have great funding, and I worked in Virginia and North Carolina where the per capita funding overall was significantly lower. But you all have supported healthy increases for us in the past, and we've appreciated that quite a bit. Couple of other things, these are a couple of those statistics I mentioned that, that help you visualize it a little better, are that index number that I pointed out where we're at five compared to our Central Maryland peers, staff per library, and then the last one is per capita budget. But going from there, I want to go to the next slide, which is what our, what our key needs are. We have something like 10 positions that we ask for, including three kindergarten readiness positions, including a data analyst, including a number of things, an HR specialist. But we would really like to focus on two positions, being the Learning and Development Assistant Manager. There were, there were overall two within our Human Resources Department. When I talked with Kovan Roundtree, our Chief of Human Resources, he said, this is the one that's most critical. If we could get this, that would be tremendous. We have a part-time staff member who, who works with the Learning and Development Manager, and that position really manages all of the, the, the training that is provided, both internally, the, the conferences that we get people to, the continuing education units that have to be achieved by all library associates and librarians and myself. I'm due this year to get my recertification and all of that type of thing. So we're really hoping that, that there may be a way to fund that position. And then, another position, again, we've been asking for this maintenance mechanic position for about five years. There's a lot of work to be done to manage these libraries. Our maintenance staff manage essentially the inside of our buildings, and the county facilities manages the roofs, HVAC and the exterior sort of shell of the building. So if we could get that position, again, those two would be great. And then, the Maryland Core Service Member Program, we have benefited from that just tremendously because what happens with that program, it's a signature program of Governor Moore, and it has gotten us three or four people over the last two years. If this can be funded this year, this would provide three positions. They're here for 41 weeks. It pretty much pays their salaries at $15 an hour, 40 hours a week, or 37 and a half hours a week. And, and at the end, they get a $6,000 bonus. So it's a tremendous program. From my point of view, I've been a real champion of this among the library systems around the state because we have always wanted to diversify our front lines, all of our staff, really. And so that people coming into the libraries see people that look like them. That's a really valuable thing to, to, to put in place. And this is a way to reach people who maybe weren't thinking about a library career. One of the people we had the first year at Bush Annapolis, she got a part-time job with us in the Digital Experience Department. So she's been, been working with us a, a second year. So I think that covers everything, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Ms. Volkey.
Oh, I did want to say one other thing, I'm sorry. Community College was willing to switch with us today. We really appreciate that. Fund everything that they want. We do have a lot of cooperative kinds of things, such as English language classes that are held in our libraries on behalf of the Community College. We do, we do training at their childcare provider classes that they do. So we have a lot of collaboration, but again, thank you all for switching.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Earl, good morning.
Mr. Volkey.
Yes. I want to talk to you for a couple minutes about Brooklyn Park. So if you remember, last year, we had questions about the elevator. Mr. Smith offered, he was going to go out and build it. I told him to go with him. We talked about that. But it looks like even more is needed this year than what was anticipated last year. So I guess, if you can walk me through what's going on, I see in the budget book, it says significant, or maybe it was the auditor's presentation, but somebody said there were significant internal things that need to be handled. Can you walk through what the costs are of this? Because I Googled what it costs for a commercial elevator.
Yeah.
It says on the high end, it could be $550,000. This is going to cost 4.5, almost 4.6 million dollars.
Okay. So I'm, I, I am at fault for talking about that project as an elevator project last year. I talked, when I had my meeting with the county executive, that's what I was focused on. And I, even at that time, I was mistaken. It was much beyond an elevator project. I, I don't know if the elevator is going to be half a million dollars of the project, but it's, it is significant additional upgrades. And I think Mr. Grant can, can talk to that, possibly Ms. Hollerback, if, if she would like to come up, too.
Yeah, we can give you the details specifically on the cost. I don't have that with me now. But it is going to include a new conference room. It's also going to expand on the staffing area that we have there at the library. And then elevator access to both floors, I think that's something that Skip mentioned, whatever. And one of the major things is we have a drainage issue there at the library. And that, part of that repair cost for those drainage issues is going to be included into this particular fund.
Okay. Yeah, if you don't mind getting us detail, you don't have to do it right now. Yeah, if you don't mind getting us detail, you don't have to do it right now, because if you can get back to us with kind of an overview of what you're looking at of kind, doesn't have to be per se line by line, but sort of general object ideas of what's going on, I think that'd be helpful for us to just understand the scope of the project. Thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take a moment to talk a little bit about the new Glen Burnie Library.
Yay.
We had a, you had an amazing turnout, I feel, at the community design event. I was a little emotional there, listening to my community speak about their love of the library and their excitement for the project. So, thank you for bringing that together. But can you, can you give me a timeline of when we're going to see a new library?
When it'll open. That is the million dollar question. I'm, I think it's going to be the year 2028. I don't know if it will be in the first half or second half of that year, but we're on track for that. I think that, working with Karen Henry and Public Works, they developed a different type of process, a sort of a modified design-build process. I think that once we get to a design point in basically right around July of this year, we're going to be ready to move into that second phase of the design-build. And what happens is that the existing architects become owner agents and the Public Works hires a new architect to kind of complete the full drawings that need to be done before we start construction. But I think that once we get to July, we'll have about nine or 10 months of further design work so that in early 2026, we are probably going to go with the demolition of the existing library. And by that time, we will be needing to move into a temporary library space. And then, so that'll be in the fiscal '27 year. So, that funding we would be looking for in the next fiscal year with the, so really that's when the demolition is likely to happen, is summertime of 2026. I'm, I haven't looked at these dates recently, but the bottom line for me has been 2028 is the year that they're telling me we're likely to be able to open.
Okay, great. Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I would love to stay apprised of the library investments happening at Brooklyn Park as well. I just, for fun, I just want to highlight that it's time for North County, for Brooklyn Park and Glen Burnie to see investment in our public assets and our libraries are very, very much utilized. And I think Anaronda County has seen library investment in other parts of the county and it's our turn. So, I look forward to be the final fiscal oversight of the Brooklyn Park renovations, but they have my full support.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
But I'm glad to hear that, Councilwoman. I'll just thank you, I just wanted to attest to the flooding that has occurred at the Brooklyn Park. I know a couple of years ago, it actually, they get pretty chaotic on that first level and had, so the drainage issue is a big, significant piece I'm glad you guys are focusing on because the library definitely needs to have that resolved. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going back to the Glen Burnie Library for a second, what's the plan for a temporary space to avoid service interruptions up there once you get the demolition?
So, the plan is to get the funding, and I'm not, I'd have to talk to Ms. Anderson about this. The funding may be in there for the temp library now, but essentially the plan is prior to the demolition of the existing building, we will secure a space. I'm kind of thinking Harondale Shopping Plaza has spaces available, so we're likely to be over there. But we will kind of look throughout the area to find the best possible temp location. We will rent it for probably a two-year period, just like we did for the Revere Beach project.
You might rent three.
Excuse me?
You might rent three, just in case.
No, we're not.
From personal experience.
I know, we're not going to have a fiasco like we had with the delays at Revere Beach. But yeah, that's the plan.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, that's a major service center for the library, so we've got to have that. So, okay. Changing gears off of that and going back to Mountain Road. So, thank you for the comments about what happened with the project last year and where you all are. In terms of looking at future locations, we've talked about sites, you and I have. I've talked to Mr. Rodella about some too. What is the timeline on when you think you might actually have an idea of where you're going to go with this?
So, I thought we would have done, had this secured by now, or at least identified by now. So, we'll believe that we have, we have someone who is hired to look at it. I believe it's, I don't want to say, but I think I know who it is that's looking at it. And they're basically looking, trying to find locations. So, as, if you have places in mind that you think might be available, you know, let me know, I can pass that along.
I want you to go at Lake Shore Complex in the back, used county-owned property, right there, same spot. We've talked about that.
Okay.
I've shared that with Mr. Rodella. I'll just share it with you publicly. Like, I think y'all need to assess that. It's literally the same spot.
Okay.
And it's a good location. So, if you can find a way to do that, I think that might be something that's on the table.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank y'all for all you do. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
And we are about to go into our education things, but we are going to take a quick break and let everybody stretch their legs and then we're going to come. So, five minutes. Okay, Anaronda Community College, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good to see everybody. The first thing, okay, the first thing I wanted to do is introduce some of our board members that are with us today. Dr. Nadine Chan is our chair, Sandy Moore was previous chair, and Annel Tamanella is one of our new board members. So, welcome. We've expanded from up to 10 board members now, so we have more representation and they're doing a great job of supporting us by being here. So, thank you. I wanted to acknowledge it publicly. Okay, so, we never bury the headline. So, here's the headline. Maintain the county executive's operating budget. That's what we're asking you to do. So, at this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa and Andrew for their overview. Obviously, they're, they are experts internally and they've been recognized for the amazing work that they do outside of the county as well. So, Melissa, I will give you the mic.
Thank you. Good morning. So, a quick update on where we stand for the current fiscal year, fiscal 2025. In terms of our financial picture, we are up approximately 4% in tuition and fees due to increased enrollment of our students. Despite the inflationary cost increases that we all continue to experience, our position vacancies have helped to offset those inflationary costs and we are maintaining a balanced budget. However, we do anticipate the need for a fourth quarter transfer, so we will be back in front of you soon to cover increased utility costs. You'll see more about that in our budget when we talk about '26, and also snow removal costs. So, we'll be looking to transfer funds between appropriation categories. Our fund balance, we call it our Tuition Stabilization Fund, is within our board's policy of 5% to 10% of total expenses, which is actually an indicator that our creditors look at and obviously provides important contingencies in the event of emergencies or even unplanned enrollment fluctuations. We build our budget with the oversight of our Board Budget Committee and as the President mentioned, we're grateful that trustee Sandra Moore is here today. She chairs our Budget Committee and that committee meets multiple times to discuss the underlying assumptions related to our budget and really put Andrew and I through the wringer before we submit a budget to the county executive. As the President mentioned, we did request an increase from the county executive of $3 million and his budget provided a $1.2 million increase, so a reduction of almost $1.9 million that we had to balance and we did. But again, we are asking you just maintain, hold the line, and please don't make any additional changes. Next slide shows you how we balance the budget for that $1.9 million reduction. We reduced the board-approved compensation pool for our faculty and staff plan for fiscal '26. We reduced it by one percentage point from 6% down to 5% and that was a little over a million dollars. And then we had some other expenditure budgets that we could adjust based on revised projections. And we also are increasing our turnover budget. We do budget for salary and benefit savings based on vacant positions. So, we did bump that budget up a little bit, which means we'll have, probably have to hold some positions vacant for longer. I'm not totally sure that, oh, the numbers match here. I think they might be off by one, but we're, we'll get you in the ballpark here around page 200 of the PDF or 195, the budget book. But again, this schedule in your budget book summarizes the college's entire operating budget. We'll walk through the details of the, in the future slides. As one note, the auxiliary enterprise and restricted funds, county council gives us an appropriation authority in total, but generally those are self-supporting activities. So, with the $1.1 million from the county and almost $2.8 million in contributions from college resources, we are able to fund our originally planned compensation increase. The board approved a $5 increase in in-county tuition and fees, so that brings the annual cost to students. A student taking 30 credit hours per year, for example, costs them $4,790. So, that $5 in-county tuition increase means it costs them for fiscal '26 another $150 to attend AAC. Next, we'll look at the revenues. We think of our budget as, our revenue budget is having three-legged, like a three-legged stool. So, the county, the state and college revenue sources. Total college sources of revenue, so that's tuition and fees plus some other smaller revenue sources, generates an increase of almost $2.8 million. Sadly, only a $434,000 increase from the state in this budget and, as I mentioned, a little under a $1.2 million increase from the county, which again, we ask you to support and make no further reductions. That's the revenue side of the equation.
Can you go back to that other slide? What was it? At 433, what was the, thank you, Madam Chair. The, from the state, so the, what was the logic or the reasoning? Was that because of the formula or was there some methodology? So, it was just simply, I mean, that didn't even look like interest. I mean, as far as inflation, sorry, that doesn't even look like inflation change. Like, that's, that looks like even less than inflation, like way less than inflation.
It's almost like zero. I mean, yes. So, it's to, to answer your question, it is formulaic. So, the Maryland community colleges, there are 16. Baltimore City is funded separately, but the, so the 15 Cade, under the Cade Funding Formula, yes, the increase is significantly less. We were quote-unquote "fully funded" under that formula for two years and so seeing significant increases. And it's one of the challenges in our budget despite what the legislation says. The governor's budget can make adjustments to that formula and we see that often. So, it's a very, while it's formulaic, you think it would be stable. It's very highly unstable. So, it's very challenging for us to plan and we, that's why we appreciate the county funding that we do get and it's why we have to increase tuition and fees this year.
Yeah, I've noticed over the last probably 40 years, whether it's on the capital side or on the operating side, funding from the state, particularly with Anaronda County, has significantly declined. There's a spreadsheet that I've been looking at and you can see that, and this just emphasizes, because our share of taxes that go to the state has not declined, but yet our receipts from the state has certainly, yeah, it's sad to see that 433. I was hoping that was going to be a little bit bigger because that's not even the inflation.
Agreed.
Thank you.
And they also, the state has shifted pension costs over to the county this year, you know, around that, about $600,000, I think, that they slid over to the county. So, there's other ways that, you know, they slide costs or reduce funding to us.
I guess I will heed Skip's advice earlier, we'll just fully fund whatever you ask for.
Please.
So, thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Skip said, okay, I think we were in the expenditure section, yes. So, this is a very high-level summary, just showing budget to budget, a recap of the allocation of new funds within this budget. Again, the majority, as you see in that first line item, the new funds are funding compensation. The next slide shows a even further breakdown of that, almost $3.4 million that we categorize as compensation-related. Again, the first line showing the impact of that 5% pool, some other miscellaneous items of note, health insurance. We do participate in the county's plan. We pool with the county, so we reflect a 2.5% increase to allow for an annualized 5% increase in the health insurance rates. And then the negatives, as I mentioned, are decreases to our compensation budget, basically an increase to the turnover budget and resetting the big $1.1 million resets based on real turnover, our compensation budget based on actual salaries as we roll that budget forward. The next slide shows, just comparatively speaking, the non-rep county employee, county employees, teachers and the library, just to give you a comparator of our compensation pool versus others. And we've generally lagged candidly. We've generally lagged those other component units and non-represented employees. So, again, another reason why we're asking you not to further reduce because we do want to hold on to now what is a 5% pool versus the 6% pool that the board approved. In the next slide, base adjustments, that's our category for, we use for increased costs associated with existing services. I mentioned the fourth quarter transfer for utilities. We did build in, into this budget, $610,000 for an increase in our utilities budget. So, that's the big number here in the base adjustment category. The next category, our legal and regulatory compliance, a small amount, but it's all got to balance, so we're showing you this number as well, just the must-do items that we need to fund. And then in the next slide, what we call our strategic and operational initiatives. This is the little bit that we were able to carve out in the budget to support our strategic plan. And this is primarily, I think there was an article over the weekend actually in the Capitol about this, $218,000 in support of our new dental hygiene program. So, that's primarily for a part-time contract for a supervising dentist for the program and maybe some other small, non-compensation-related items. So, that, that funding is in the '26 budget. Again, a recap of the new funds and again, the majority of the increase coming from compensation. I think we've said this 16 times today, but here it is again. Please maintain the county executive's operating budget. And then in capital, this shows, this is the AAC way of showing our capital budget summary and really heeding the guidance from the administration that focusing on completing existing projects, not bringing any new projects into the CIP. And we believe we've aligned to that guidance and we're so very appreciative, to your point, Councilman Smith, in our capital budget, we're appreciative both the state and particularly the county level for the support for our priorities, our new Health and Life Science, can I keep saying it's new? Our new Health and Life Sciences Building, which is spectacular space for our students and we are currently, we can go to the next slide, I guess, currently renovating our Florastano Building, which was vacated when folks moved out of the Health and Life Sciences Building. So, that will become a new building to Student Services Building. And several of you have been through our very tired Dragon Science Building. So, we're so thrilled that you are providing the county share of funding so we can access the state share, up to 50% of funding for that project. And we are in design and it's going to be spectacular when we get that building renovated. Of note, that building initial cost came in almost double what the county had programmed. So, working with Chris Trembauer and his team, we went back to the drawing board and we did kind of reconfigure what the plan is for that building. It was going to have, in addition to the current building, I mean, in addition to the renovation of the current building, in addition to it, to house our math faculty who are in less than adequate space. We had to forego the addition. So, now to keep it affordable, it's a renovation of the existing building. In our new facilities master plan, we do have a plan to find, I think, very exciting space for our math faculty. So, those two projects are really the two big rocks in our facilities master plan. And then we also have some deferred maintenance projects. The big one in Systemics is replacing the roof on our careers building, which is repeatedly leaking. And then some other deferred maintenance projects that the county funds. And I think, yeah, I talked about those projects. We are all, I didn't talk about the HCAT. HCAT is our Hospitality Culinary Arts and Tourism. HCAT is our hospitality, culinary arts, and tourism program. They're currently located in Glenbernie in the former Robinson Building. And that building, we've worked with the county, that building, the foundation is sinking. So we are going to be, it's programmed in the CIP that we will be moving those folks, that's the savory, the savory kitchen, we're going to be moving those folks down from Glenbernie down to an addition to our existing Clausen Building, Clausen Center for Innovation and Skilled Trades, and co-locating both the savory and the sweet kitchens together to an addition to our HCAT, to our Clausen Building. So that's in the out years as well. And I think that's everything going very quickly, so be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we're tasked with covering up our desks and moving things out of the Glenbernie Town Center Building. So that project is starting this summer sometime and expected to last how long?
A little over a year. That's actually a county project.
Oh, it's a county project?
Correct. That's the HVAC replacement.
Yes. I see that the building is, for you guys, is titled Student Tutoring Center?
Oh, that's a prior year project. That's the renovation that we did.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, as things move out, I mean, we are, the community college is going to continue to occupy that building when the?
When the HVAC project is finished, we are, yes, we will likely be moving back in. And we are in, we are in talks with the administration about possibly after that, co-locating with AAWDC in that space. So that's, those conversations are still ongoing.
Okay. And then the HCAT, the Robinson Building, how lo, how long will y'all be occupying that building for now?
Oh goodness, that project is scheduled for design in fiscal year 2028. So, you know, a few more years there.
Okay. I'm just, a lot of moving parts. The town center, the county, and, and community college are large anchor tenants in the town center and its vibrancy is reliant on occupied buildings.
Correct.
So I'm, it's a, it's like musical chairs.
Yes.
So hopefully we can stabilize that part of the county and see some real positive impacts for the surrounding area. But I am, I am mindful of the Cade formula mismatch again this year. I thought we had, we'd really, I don't know how many years we were moving towards a little more even three-legged stool and we're back at fighting for scraps. It's very frustrating. Maybe y'all can speak to the state of the union here with the economy and the employment. Are y'all seeing, are y'all seeing enrollment growth as people are transitioning again?
Yeah, it's a really good question. I would say on Cade, I think I answered Councilman Smith's questions on, on Cade, you know, that's formulaic, but can be tinkered with through the, through the governor's Burfa and was the case this year. So we had two years where it was statutorily funded and we are very appreciative, but it's a challenge for us, absolutely. And then in terms of enrollment, I mean, we've been steadily, I'd say, building enrollment back since, since COVID. We tend to, when there are times of economic downturn, recession, we tend to see enrollment increases. And in the past, we've actually seen enrollment explosions, obviously pre-COVID, where there wasn't a parking space on campus, literally, the last recession. I'm not sure that this is the same type of recession where we're going to see that huge of a rebound, but obviously, we are the place folks come when they need to retool and upskill. So it's possible we could see more than an increase than, than we've planned for, but we did build into the fiscal '26 budget, basically holding the line on what we're seeing now. So it's built, it's showing, you know, over the fiscal '25 budget, a 4% increase. And, you know, we're ready to serve those students when, when they do show up.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. I was just going to start out by commenting that the health and life sciences building, I think is from the future. So I think you have a few more years of saying it's new because it's really from the future. It's so cool. And then my other, my question was, with respect to your compensation pool, does, do you plan on increasing in staffing? Do you have, because we don't have that level of detail in here.
We have, this budget does not fund, other than the aforementioned dental hygiene, a part-time contract, if you will, that we have to have for accrediting, we have no new funding for positions. We tend to reallocate. So we have all kinds of initiatives underway or recurring where we look for efficiencies in spending and we will reallocate funds, and that was true in, in this budget, to fund massage therapy, you know, clinical coordinator, for example. We reallocate funds to fund that position. So we have no new positions in this budget. Long answer your short question.
That's perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Ms. Lybeter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The question about enrollment made me think of this. Have you continued to see, and maybe the school system, I'm not sure if it's you or the school system that's the appropriate people to ask, but I'll start with you. Have you continued to see a large participation with high school students, whether it be the dual credit or the standalone college credit? Are you seeing growth in that program? Is it holding steady? Where are you with that as far as participation in numbers?
Great question. And when the schools come up, they can validate my answer here, right, Matt? So you're referring to the dual enrollment, we call it the ECAP, Early College Access Program.
Exactly.
Blueprint.
I couldn't, couldn't pull the acronym.
The acronym.
Even though I have forms on my kitchen counter at home.
So interestingly, that program, yes, is seeing very, very high enrollments. With the changes enacted during the 2024 legislative session, it was wide open when that program was initiated and the funds were not unlimited. So the Maryland General Assembly changed or allowed for LEAs to limit the number of classes. And so we're seeing, just this spring, we're seeing, we saw record numbers last year. We're still doing, it's very wildly popular, but as a result of the, the change in the county's ability to, or school system's ability to limit the number of classes, we are seeing kind of a leveling off there. But we are, we have seen record numbers. We did see record numbers last year. It's a great program for, for our county.
It's also possible not, not every household has gotten around to getting online yet. Thank you.
So the, our, the budget analysis we received talked about that changes in student loans and Pell Grants, that how could that, are y'all anticipating that having an impact on your enrollment and your tuition dollars coming in?
So are you referring to what's in the budget book, perhaps?
Yes, yes. Just, do you think?
Yes. So our, our, one of our funds, our restricted funds, we are projecting an increase and that is a significant increase, a $7.8 million in that line item. And that's really due to an increase in what we anticipate students being eligible for Pell and other federal financial aid.
So y'all are anticipating an increase, but from things we're seeing about how they're reworking the student, federal student loans and grants?
So. We are seeing the increase now.
Okay.
So we're projecting, we've built that increase into our '26 budget. In terms of the changes at the federal level, so far, those programs, SEOG, Pell, work-study, et cetera, those programs, while those funds do come to the college, they were, they pass through us. They're really, they're student funds that come to the college to pay their tuition. So those programs so far have not been impacted by the changes at the federal level, up to and including the dismantling of Department of Ed. So those, they're, they're considered programs that, payments to individuals. So they're not like you might see at Harvard and Columbia and other institutions where grants are being canceled. So far, those federal programs, very important for our students, have not been impacted.
Okay. To have that. And then, was I reading your slide correctly, that y'all are anticipating $600,000 increase in utilities?
610,000.
Wow.
We've, we've built in over the years, we've seen, we're in a consortium that I think the county is in as well, Brick Pack Consortium, to take advantage of, of those rates and I won't, I'm sure you know the reasons why, but.
Sure.
So we've seen decreases over the years that we've built in our budget. Now it's time, we know, you know, the energy capacity, et cetera, have been an issue. So yes, we're building in an increase of 610,000, primarily for utilities, but also snow removal as well.
Yeah.
You did see that number.
That's, that's a lot. That's a lot. No, I mean, if that's not something you can control, that's, that's set for there. So are there any further questions? Thank you all so much. Excited about the new dental hygienist program? That's going to be, I'm sure that's going to be very popular. Yes. Definitely. Thank you. And our final presentation of the day is the big one, Anaronda County Board of Education. Yes. We can bob their, Bob. Bob. Bob Mosher.
Vice Chair Rodvian and distinguished members of the council. I looked at my watch, it's so morning. Good morning and thank you for the opportunity for us to be here today. I am joined by my colleague Dana Schauheim and of course, Dr. Bedell, our superintendent, and Matt Stansky, our chief financial officer, as well as our chief operating officer, Dr. Heiser, and as well as Kyle Roof and Melissa Carmella. As I said in my statement on May the 1st, the county executive and his team have worked extremely hard in what are complex and very difficult financial times to continue to support the great students of our county as well as our great AACPS employees. We are so very grateful for that work and we look forward to working with you in the coming weeks to do everything that we can to help each and every one of our students belong, grow, and succeed. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Mr. Silkworth. We also have in attendance with us Michael Dickerson, our chief of staff, and Bob Moser, our chief communication officer. I want to thank you all as a county council for your continued support. Over my first two years as superintendent, we've seen nothing but significant support from this, this county. And here's the only thing I can say to you, really to sum it up. You have a school district that is on the brink of becoming one of the finest school districts in the United States. We were already good and what we said was, we weren't interested in just being good. We're on the brink of being great. And I have data to support that, that this money that you all have supported us with, there are significant returns that are, that will ultimately result in our students graduating globally competitive, that will only feed back into this community. Hot off the press, and I can't go into any details because we have not even shared it with our board, our SAT scores came in. And all I can tell you is when this data comes out, this, this data is unbelievable across all student groups and our overall data performance. And those of you who have students that are juniors or seniors, I'm certain you're seeing the progress that's being made in your own children. But this data speaks to something even bigger. The investments to allow for our kids to take the PSAT in the ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade, by the time they get to the 11th grade, our kids are going to have access and doors open up in a way that other school districts simply will not be able to do. And it's because of your support. Finally, I'll say this to you all, you know, we're, we're open to do a deep data dive to really give this county council a significant update, just like we've done with the Annapolis City Council. I think it's important for you all to truly know where we are on a number of metrics, but I do want you all to know that all of the support that we're asking for from this county executive and you all will be put to good use at this time. We will pass it over to have Matt Stansky to take us through the presentation.
Thanks, Dr. Bedell. As we alluded to, we're going to walk through the county executive's proposed operating budget as well as proposed capital budget and then turn it over to you all for, for questions. As Dr. Bedell alluded to, we're, we are so pleased with the amount of investment we've seen over the last couple of years since Dr. Bedell's administration has started. And we believe with the county executive's proposal, we continue to move forward with that momentum. I think it is important for the council to get a overview of where we are demographically, both year-over-year and then really since the pandemic. As you could see, overall, total enrollment year-over-year for this school year is up 683 students. We did see for K through 12, enrollment increases of 493. And then we continue to see in our subgroups, significant increases. You could see students qualifying for free and reduced-priced meals up 2.4%. Students qualifying for multilingual services up 6.8%. Students qualifying for special education services up 2.7%. And again, with our continued push to full-day pre-K for tier-one students, we saw a 14% increase in the number of students accessing pre-K services. Where have we been since the pandemic? And I think this slide is important to show because we are seeing a huge demographic shift in the student population we're serving in Anaronda County Public Schools. So since the pandemic, our total enrollment has gone up 36 students, so now over 85,000 overall. K through 12, we are down 3/10 of 1%, but our, our subgroups are compensatory, our students who qualify for free and reduced-priced meals are up 32.29% during that time, 37.3% increase for students qualifying for multilingual services, and 15.3% for students qualifying for special education services. A lot of these factors then are inputted into the state funding formulas to determine our state aid growth year-over-year. As you can see statewide, the state continues to lose K through 12 enrollment. So overall, the state's down a tenth of a percent in overall enrollment. Anaronda County is one of 10 districts who have increased enrollment. You can see we're seventh this year with an increase of 6/10 of 1%. Our local per pupil wealth at 2.8% is below the state average, which means then we are accessing more state aid because we are essentially poorer on a per-student basis than the state. So the state average there is 3.9% and we're at 2.8. Again, the, the main factor there driving that is our enrollment growth. If you have more students, therefore, the denominator's bigger, whereas districts that are losing students, their wealth, wealth per student's going to go up on a, on a much more rapid clip. And so therefore, we saw an increase in state aid of 6.6%, which is above the state average year-over-year of 6.1%. So that's a positive trend on the state, state funding side. What else is impacting state aid? Anaronda County has 66.2% of our overall enrollment is what they call targeted students. These are students who qualify for free and reduced-priced meals, multilingual services, or special education services. You can see the statewide average there is 79.5%. So we're still below the state average, but growing as well. And then we hold steady as, at seventh as overall local per pupil wealth. So per the state formulas, we are considered the seventh wealthiest jurisdiction in the state. Again, above the state average of 732,000. So this is a year-over-year look from fiscal '24 to fiscal '25 on a per-student basis, state and county revenue totals. You could see we were last school year 13th at 18,061 per student in revenue. We are 14th during this school year at 19,102. Again, I think that is, a, a part of that is our enrollment growth compared to other jurisdictions who are not seeing enrollment growth. But again, we are still below the state average and we are still below our, our neighboring peers, Howard County, Baltimore County, Baltimore City, Prince George's County. So a breakdown of that, so where we are from a state revenue standpoint, on a per-student basis for this school year, 7,735, which is 19th in the state. We were, did move up one, we were 20th in the state. We were, did move up one, we were 20th in the state last year. And again, on a, on a county side, we're holding steady at, at number six, at 11,368 per student. You can see the jurisdictions above and below us. As Dr. Bedell alluded to, we are seeing return, returns on your investment, and we're gonna spend the next couple of slides walking through that. First is, this, this council, along with our board and superintendent and county executive, have really invested in compensation of our workforce over the last six years. And you can see from the, from the slide here, we are now seeing a significant impact from that investment. Our retention rates are as high as they've ever been, our vacancy rates are as low as they have ever been. And so you could see for this school year, we retained 93.35% of our non-instructional employees, and just over 94% of our instructional employees. How's the blueprint working? So we're looking at community school data, which is really providing those investments around wraparound services. And you can see year over year, in our community schools, 4.4% decrease in referrals, 8.7% decrease in suspensions, and absenteeism rate down 11.4% as well. So again, the investments made by both the state and county in this program is really paying off. And then ultimately, our impact around our academic data, you can see from our MCAPs from last school year, 1.9% increase in our ELA proficiency. Again, still trending higher than the state average, a 1.8% increase in our, our math proficiency, again, higher than the state average. And a big, big one here from our national board data, 14%, 14.8% increase in participation in taking AP exams, and with that, 24.7% passing that exam. So these are two great data points to show, again, our investments are paying off. Obviously, the overall data's not where we want it to be, but it's trending in the right direction. All right, so let's get to the budget itself. Again, we've handed out our traditional, our overview summary, and we'll walk you through the slides here. So on the revenue side, we're looking at all-in, $99.8 million in the general fund, 44, or 45.6 million in state revenue. This is an increase from what the board had projected. When the governor introduced his budget back in January, there were reductions across the board to our foundation and our formulas. The general assembly has restored those cuts. And so with that restoration, we're projecting a $45.6 million increase in state aid. And the county side, the county executive authorized $52 million of additional county dollars. That's a 5.5% increase over last year. Our local revenue, we're projecting a 2.2% increase. This is mostly, again, attributable to interest rates and interest income around that. On the restricted side, we are seeing a reduction of $6.8 million. This is again, through the expiration of our COVID grants in fiscal '25, so that is reflective, reflective of that. We, this is also reflective of the continuing resolution that was passed by Congress, obviously continuing to monitor what's happening with the, at the federal level as far as future fiscal years. So all-in, $92.9 million increase in state, in overall revenue, 5.5% increase over fiscal Where's that funding going? 59.4 million will be in compensation. We'll walk through specifics. 16.1 million in contractual obligations, 10.6 in blueprint mandates, 2.6 million for Esser Funding Cliff, and then $11 million for enhancements for student achievement. On the compensation front, the county executive authorized $44.8 million for a step increase for all eligible employees in a 3% COLO, cost of living adjustment for all employees. 2.5 million for the mandatory increase for national board certification for, so for employees who meet the state definition of teacher and are now eligible for that increase. I will let the council know that this funding also includes, for the first time, we'll be employing lead teachers and paying an extra $5,000 for Level 4 lead teachers, as well as, per the law, folks who renew their certification after a certain date will receive an additional $8,000 salary enhancements. All of that's built into that 2.5 million. Career ladder transition, we have come to an agreement last year on a, on a required career ladder per the blueprint. That career ladder was required to incentivize teachers to enter the career ladder, and so this funding would be placed into that new salary schedule to, as the, as employees make their choice to transition into the career ladder. Next is, the blueprint requires a certain level of certification for our Unit 4 teaching assistants for pre-kindergarten in our special education early childhood classrooms. And so this funding reflects that increased job responsibility for those folks to enhance their pay for that. We did a salary study for our Unit 2, which is our principals and administrator unit. This funding agreed upon by the pending agreement with the bargaining unit would help begin place those assistant principals and principals on our new salary scale. There is also funding, $657,000 to restructure the Unit 3 salary scale, which is our custodians, our food service workers, our bus drivers, to begin the starting salary at $18 an hour. And so $657,000 to effectuate that pending agreement with Unit 3. And then for Units 5 and 6, we also did a compensation study, and this funding would be available to then place folks on the new scale who are making below the minimum salary per the, for the study. On the benefit front, we have $9.3 million, $8 million for our healthcare fund, and then $1.3 million both for our commercial insurance and our self-insurance fund, which is all procured through county government. Commitments, we are turning our, the Carver Center, which is currently a professional development center, into a early childhood center to, again, meet the demand of pre-kindergarten. And so we are looking for two FTEs to begin that. That school will, is scheduled to open in the '26, '27 school year. And then with our increases in our revenue, the charter schools get a proportionate share. Chesapeake Science Point will get that proportionate share, along with their, we're projecting a, a increase in their student enrollment, so they'll get $3.6 million, and then our existing charter and contract schools at 2.9 million. Blueprint mandates, so we talked a little bit about college and career readiness at the community college. So this is a $3.4 million mandatory increase, again, to pay for advanced placement exams, dual enrollment programs, PSAT, SAT, as Dr. Bedell alluded to. We are adding another 14 community schools, so we will have 47 community schools starting next year. And so at $9.2 million, that funding will go to those new schools as well as mandatory increases to the existing community school programs. Here you see a reduction of $2 million. This is legislated per the blueprint. This was funding to support early literacy and tutoring in grades K through 3. It was ramped up between fiscals '22 and '25, and now it's starting to ramp down. Fiscal '27, well, you'll see per the law, the elimination of this program. And so that's why you see the, the cut there. And then there's an inflationary, a mandatory inflationary factor put on the, our payments to the workforce development board for the career counseling program that we partner with them on for grades 6 through 12. And so that's what that $150,000 reflects there. On the funding cliff part, we have $2.6 million. First is iReady software. This was, this was our intervention software for grades K through 8 for reading and mathematics that had been funded since the pandemic began through a variety of COVID grants. Those, obviously, grants are expiring. We'd like to keep the intervention software in place, and so $1.5 million to support that. And then $1.1 million, our, our current learning management system was also funded through COVID grants, so we need to move those off the COVID funding stream and onto the general fund. We have, we will have a new learning management system canvas that will start in Ernst next school year. Programmatic increases, we have $1.6 million for athletics. This is to shore up costs for officials in transportation to games. $1.7 million for educational options. This is to support credit recovery for evening high school, twilight school, summer school. $2.9 million in operations and maintenance. This is also for utilities. Utility increases, as, and discussed in prior budget hearings with the community college, we are experiencing the same utility increase as well. $2 million for our non-public tuition for special education. Those costs continue to go up. There's now a mandate from the state that the non-public schools pay, or, or pay their employees equivalent to what districts or LEAs pay their employees, and so we're seeing tuition increases because of that mandate, and so $2 million for that. And then $957,000 in technology. This is inflationary adjustment for all of our subscriptions for security software, as well as Microsoft and things of that nature. On the enhancements for student achievement, we are requesting 9.6 positions, $843,000 for four additional pre-K 4 classrooms to be open next school year. So this will be for teachers, teaching assistants, and the requisite cultural arts teachers. On the English language development front, you see this continues to be our fastest-growing population, and so we have three of our requests that were funded here. Bilingual facilitators, converting some of them from 10 months to 12 months, so they can work with their families year-round. An additional two bilingual facilitators at 12 months at $207,000, and then 10 English language development teachers at $873,000. The school support side, currently, all of our high school students use Chromebooks that have been purchased. This $3 million would go towards a new lease program of Windows devices. We feel like those are more appropriate devices for high school-aged children, and so this would help fund two grades. The board's request was for all four grades, but we have two grades here in the county executive's budget, and then hopefully we can come back next year for the, for the other two grades. Phase two, or year two of the middle school athletic implementation was fully funded by the county executive at $1.6 million. The district is also looking into, looking to fund a pilot program for our weapons detection system at two schools. And so those two schools were funded at $333,280. And then finally, the board did request $70,000 for agricultural science programs, both at Southern High School and at Phoenix Academy, and the county executive fully funded that request as well. The board is interested in bringing in our new teachers earlier into orientation, and so this is, this funding would be, would compensate those, those new employees to get them additional professional development before the school year starts. On the special education front, the board did request a total of 155 positions. Again, you've seen the increase over the last five years in the special education population. We've had little to no growth in new positions to help support those students. So we did request 155. The county executive funded 28 positions at $2.6 million. On the transportation front, we do have vans in place, and so this is to round out our van drivers and aides at $610,900, and then some additional support for the teen parenting program for transporting those students to those programs at $45,000. Some of the, some of the items that went, that the board had requested that went unfunded in the county executive's proposal includes compensation for national board certified school counselors. Currently, the blueprint does not recognize those, these group of employees as teachers of record, and so they do not qualify for the state funding for that. And so this would, essentially would have initiated a fully county-funded program for our national board certified counselors. We did ask for a million dollars for a $10 a day increase in substitute teacher pay that was not funded. We also requested a $1,000 retention incentive for employees with 30 or more years that was not funded, and compensation for overnight field trips to Arlington Echo that was not funded. The board had also requested $3.7 million for the opening of New Village Academy, which again, that, that school has delayed their opening. We also had a million dollars for operations and maintenance service contract increases that was not funded, as well as our Grow Your Own Tuition Reimbursement Program. I will say on this one, the, in the state budget, there's new funding available in, in grants for Grow Your Own Initiative, so this remains unfunded. We do have another mechanism to acquire funding for that. Continuing, we did request for the board office to get two constituent service liaisons that was not funded. We did request for two bilingual per pupil personnel workers that went unfunded. $1.9 million in early intervention teachers. This was the backfill to that blueprint cut that we saw. We, we've seen really good data in this program. We advocated at the state for it to be restored. We were unsuccessful, so we are, we were asking for this funding at the local level. It did, it did not get funded. Funding for our co-curricular clubs was not funded as well. The board did ask for some additional school counselors that was not funded, as well as upgrades in a refresh program for our security cameras at $1.2 million. Our apprenticeship program at the cafeteria we have in Riva Road went unfunded, as well as funding for musical instrument repair and replacement. Last part of the unfunded pieces, digital, telehealth digital license, our universal behavioral health screening went unfunded, as well as our social workers' requests, psychologists and PPWs. I will say, that $9 million increase in the community school program is funding a lot of these positions, but those are dedicated to those schools specifically. These would have been district-wide positions. And then $1.7 million in our birth-to-five services and our unique, our software system for unique learners at $325,000. So I'm gonna stop there. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Heiser, Mr. Roof, and they'll walk you through the capital budget request.
Thank you, Mr. Stansky. As you, you have a list of the 25 priorities here that our board of education submitted and requested, and so I won't take you through all 25 of those items, but do want to hit a few highlights for you. The board of education asked and approved $204.7 million, and the county executive proposed budget is for $194.8 million. And so overall, we are really, really satisfied and appreciative of the support that's come from the county executive, come from the county council in, in the past to support our facilities. I will say, just to add on, it's good that we follow the operating budget, because the truth is, is that all the investments that are being made on the operational side contribute without a doubt, and you saw the unprecedented results that are occurring in this school system. Amazing. It also is a fact that when you invest on the capital side, it impacts students and teachers greatly. So when you look at the retention of our teachers, the academic performance of our students, without a doubt, if, if the investments aren't made, which have been done in the past, it just helps greatly to aid to the success momentum that we have. And so with that, you'll see an incredible amount of support from the county executive. Again, the largest items within this capital budget, one is in the area of building systems, renovations. That's obviously comes with matching state funds, which we've done very, very well with. We've been good stewards of those funds to help with the replacement of HVAC systems, roofing, electrical systems, for example. So that is in the tune of almost $33 million. This capital budget also looks to fully fund and finish out the Old Mill Master Plan, which we're all really excited about. And you've seen the past success. I, I really believe that we've, we've set records in terms of, as a county, in building new schools, and they're absolutely fabulous, and we've been to all those ribbon cuttings, and the students are excelling. And so this is another step forward in helping with the Old Mill Master Plan, as well as the Cat North construction, and that's items 15 through, through 17. There were some amendments that were made, and so I just want to walk through those. One was- One was the one project that was not funded by the county executive, and that's in the area of additions for our schools. And again, this reduction is makes sense and we fully support that adjustment because of redistricting. We've not seen as high a need for the need for additions. So it makes sense that we would not make that investment in that area. In the areas in blue, those are the amended items and you see a reduction. First one is relocatable classrooms where you see a reduction to $400,000. Again, with redistricting, makes sense. We would have less of a need for relocatable classrooms and so we support that change as well. The next item is school bus replacement and that's going from $3 million to $2.1 million. And that still allows for funding for our electrical infrastructure to continue and that'll be at the Cat South bus lot and it provides 1.1 for bus and van replacements. The next item of amendment, school bus facility lot, it's a reduction in funding to $4.6 million. And we work hand in glove with the county administrators and appreciate their support. We continue to look for property for our school bus lot. We believe we've located another one that we're just doing our due diligence in making sure we move forward, but it makes sense to reduce that and that'll still help us move forward with that property as we look to design and implement that. The board of education program planning, that was one item that received an increase. And so not only does that include our master planning ability to do that, which you know is will be rolled out in August at the next the August board meeting, and so we're excited to do that. But there's an increase in funding that was granted of $250,000 for a feasibility study for to look at the Glenn Burney High School space. Next, you'll see an upgrade in the area of upgrades for various schools. You see there's a an additional $29,500 and that's for an electrical sign grant, which was issued for Rundle High School and a Rundle Middle School. And the last item I'll touch on is athletic facility improvement. Once again, another grant was provided and that's in the area of it's an additional $100,000 for Chesapeake High School's field house. And so with that, I'll pause. I'm sure you have questions on both sides of the item and we're all here to answer questions. Thank you.
Ms. Raviya?
Thank you. I just actually I'll save my questions for a minute, but for the record, I want to disclose that I am currently teaching in AACPS as a substitute teacher and I will be filing a, you know, the official statement conflict forthcoming.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a question in the school support, actually two questions in the school support area of the operating budget. Looking at the same document from last year, there were fewer details broken out. So for the universal behavioral health screener and the musical instrument repair and replacement, are those new funding areas that you requested that have not previously received funding?
Yeah, so we'll start with the behavioral health screener is new.
Okay.
Yes, we are looking to have that for all middle and high school. Just with the, again, the push with blueprint for increased mental health awareness, the team felt like this would be a good tool for the district to have to, again, help identify earlier somebody, anybody with issues. On the on the musical repair side, that is traditionally, unfortunately for us, been a fourth quarter sort of transfer item, right? We have some musical musical instruments in disrepair. We needed to find some money to to push towards that. I think what we're trying to do is get move away from kind of putting a Band-Aid on the problem and trying to to get some additional funding in for both repairs and just purchase of instruments, especially for students who can't can't afford to get their own instrument. But it was not funded.
Okay. So in the past, we'll stay with the musical instruments. It's been a fourth quarter transfer. So you've committed, you've, I would assume have been repairing instruments throughout the year and replacing them. And then you get to the fourth quarter and you've already expended it, so you need to...
Yeah, it's been on the whim of for available funding in fourth quarter, right? Which we will be presenting another fourth quarter and the theme here is, what's great news is because of our employee retention, we're keeping more of our employees. But what that means is our vacancy savings is not what it normally is. And so we're not as we're not transferring as much money to do things like buy new musical instruments as we've been able to in the past.
Okay, very helpful. I just noticed that this list for school support was much longer than it has been in previous years. So that's helpful.
Ms. Lutbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Curious about the laptops for high schoolers. I know currently we have a Chromebook program. Is there a reason, or Russia, I assume there is, but what is the reason and rationale? I mean, a laptop is a much more significant device than a Chromebook, obviously its capability, but also from a cost perspective. And are there any concerns? I mean, high school students, I've raised them, I love them, but not always the most responsible when it comes for for caring for electronic and other devices. So are there any concerns about wear and tear and the cost of keeping up with this sort of program?
I would say yes and no. I think traditionally you're going to have high school students damage some of our materials. And I think, you know, for us, I feel that Anarondo County is behind the eight ball when it comes to what electronic devices our high schoolers have access to. We believe just from a research based standpoint that Chromebooks are not appropriate for high schoolers. Most other school districts, at least all of the schools districts I've worked in, students had the devices that we're trying to put in their hands now. It aligns more with what they're going to be utilizing when they go to college, which they're not going to be using Chromebooks when they go to college. That's probably more so for your middle schoolers and lower elementary level students. So our goal was to try to just make sure that we're putting our kids and just as much as we have these nice facilities and amenities, making sure that they also have 21st century appropriate level electronic devices that they can use to access or that we have to offer. I mean, they're basically glorified textbooks in essence. And so that was a charge from our our school leadership team and many of those people are from other school districts where they're like, wow, I can't believe we're still using Chromebooks in Anarondo County for high schoolers. So it is a reason, a research based reason why we wanted to make that transition.
I'm sure you might if I follow up. And would this be like the Chromebooks now where the students take they're taking them to and from school? So they're for home use and in school use?
For the high schoolers.
For the high schoolers only.
Yes.
And then I guess whether it was a Chromebook or a laptop, I recognize what I'm about to ask would apply to either. But AI, and obviously there's a lot of opportunities for AI to be used in a really beneficial way for education. Also, the more we connect our students to technology, it also presents opportunities for them, unfortunately, to use AI and maybe not the most honest way in their academic pursuits. Has there been any thought from a policy procedure, you know, policy or procedure standpoint on how the school system is going to kind of make sure these resources are used in a way that is positive and not negative?
Correct, 100%. In fact, we are scheduling our annual cabinet retreat and one of the agenda items on that will be what our policies will look like, what our administrative policies will look like for AI. In fact, Mike Morkowski and Christina Catalano, they're already ahead of where we need to be in terms of working and collaboration to make sure that we understand what an acceptable use policy will look like. We want our kids to understand that this technology is here and it's not going anywhere. And we want our students to come up with original thought, but we also want our students to be able to leverage this technology in a way that will give them an advantage when they when they graduate. And I think how we put the guardrails together and what an administrative policy will look like will ultimately dictate that. I was talking to Mr. Silkworth about just how we are all using co-pilot now and how this ultimately can be a game changer for our educators from a workload management standpoint. But as a district, we have to put parameters in place and we're well on our way to having all of those ready to go. We've hired a consultant to also help us around this AI conversion and what parameters will look like. So that is coming. Councilwoman Lutbetter?
Awesome, thank you. I'll probably have more questions, but someone else have a chance.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I did with the community college, I'm just obviously really grateful and excited about finalizing and finishing the Old Mill High School master plan in which is concentrated in District Two. For my colleagues, it also creates a lot of constituent chatter regarding school to community connectivity with road improvements and traffic and sidewalks. So we are extremely excited to see this come to the those last final years. The Cat North is under construction now, right? To be, can you walk me through Cat North, Old Mill, the three timelines, general timelines? I'm not going to hold you to them because, you know, things can happen, but it does get confusing for the folks watching at home and maybe their council member.
Mr. Roof's got a real detailed.
Yeah, so Cat North is under construction right now, has been for almost a year. We are looking to open that building in '27, '28 school year. Old Mill High School is just getting underway for construction and we anticipate that opening for the '28, '29 school year. We have yet to bid Old Mill North. That will be located at the existing Cat North site, but current timeline anticipating '28, '29 school year as well.
Very exciting. So as we come to the end of this sort of 10-year plan of, right? Yes. The board of education will be receiving a new education facilities strategic plan. We've relied on it as MGT. That's not what it's going to be called anymore. But when are we expected to see that coming out? It's not informing this budget. It's going to probably start to inform the following budget, correct?
Yes, so we anticipate a draft report over the summer and then a final report this fall and it will likely impact the FY '27 through '37 budgets.
And that dovetails with redistricting and other conversations, processes that are happening in the school system?
Correct.
Yes.
I'll leave it at that. I am excited about that $250,000 to take a look at Glenn Burney High School. It is a very unique campus. It's the one of the oldest high schools or the oldest high school in the county and it's time to think out of the box of how we're going to handle that in the next 10 to 15 years. The community is excited as I believe it's gotten the attention of the governor and others. So I think there's a lot of support, not just in the community, but in the state. That's exciting.
Yeah, I too am anxious to see what those results yield.
As a mother of two graduates of Glenn Burney High School, I would love for future generations to have a different building configuration than what we have. They got a great education, but it's a wonky space. So, but Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick question. I didn't see this presentation and for some reason I couldn't find it. Can you email it to me because I was trying to... Park Elementary is, over the last few months, as the immigration issues, I know this is not necessarily a question. A lot of the ESAL students have sort of either not shown up at school or is there is there an approach, I guess the administration has taken to try to address or figure out what's happening with some of those students who have, in some instances, just disappeared? And what that looks like from a community conversation?
Yeah, I mean, I think ultimately for us, we've I've put out several statements, both to our student population, but also to our parents who may be impacted by some of what's happening with immigration. We do have a number of support personnel, whether it's our PPWs or family liaisons that may be at a number of our schools, that are also going out and working directly with parents in addition to the supports that we have in our English language learning department. I could tell you that I've shared this with the school board, that we did see a significant drop in attendance rates immediately following the announcements of immigration. And I also, because of a statement that I put out, found myself on the phone with the, you know, state individual, I think Mr. Ellison, who's over ICE, having a conversation about the position that Anarondo County will take on ensuring that our kids are safe and are able to go to school feeling like they can get their education. We've since seen improvements because I get annual attendance rates every single week and I give that to the school board every Friday in the superintendent's update and we have seen a recovery in attendance rates. If there are individual incidents occurring at Park Elementary, then I think we can work as a team around how we target that. I just haven't received any communication that we're having major attendance issues at Park Elementary because of immigration outside of what happened initially across the entire county when it first came out. But we will work with the community on that.
Okay, I appreciate it. We, the county, obviously experienced an IT threat here recently. Is the request isn't a budget? Is that sufficient to address any gaps you all may perceive that could impact you from an IT perspective?
Yeah, I feel if we get full funding of our IT budget, the team's got structured systems and structures in place to hopefully prevent any any sort of incident. I will say Power School has had a national incident and it'd be a good opportunity for me to let you know that AACPS was not impacted by the by the Power School by the Power School breach because of redundant controls we had in place. So, but it's obviously we're constantly vigilant with it. But yeah, I believe full funding of our request should be sufficient.
And I will tell you, I know we're working with a number of partners. I know MGT is one of the partners we're working with around cyber control, cyber attack control. I think they've done a really good job of working with us and our exposure is while we're all at risk, because all these folks will do is knock on doors constantly until they can just easily walk into one. I think we are very vigilant with the partnerships that we have, even if it's, I can't remember who it was with the military. We have a partnership around cyber cyber attack control with the US military and I can't remember the exact name. But we are, we're in a much better situation in Anarondo County than I I've experienced a severe cyber attack back in 2017, 2018 and it's not something that anybody will ever want to live through. So I think we're very preventative to the best of our ability out here, what we've invested in already.
Well, and just a shout out, just continue to be grateful for your leadership and I'm glad that you're a data driven leader and you always come back to us with stats that actually just follow the numbers. And so just grateful for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate you all.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the capital budget. I ask this question every year. Security related upgrades, I would assume that is the remainder of the vestibules or is that something else? Have we completed that project?
We're on our way to completing the remaining school vestibules. We're working on satellite offices as well. And then we are moving on to other security apparatuses and functions within the buildings.
So will we finish the vestibules this year in this budget?
With the '26 fiscal year, we should be wrapping up the remaining vestibules.
Okay, that is music to my ears. I'm sure yours as well. Going to move down to the maintenance backlog. This is a related but unrelated question. You all know that we've heard from some families at Broadneck Elementary School regarding concerns over plumbing pipes. Have those pipes been looked at for size and the efficiency as far as size and their connection to the county lines? And is that something that would be in this or is it not necessary because the lines are fine?
That's not in here and it's unnecessary, but let pivot over. Mr. Roof and I have double teamed this effort in responding to the community and their concerns and and it's good that they are reaching out, you know, to share their concerns. Anytime constituents... Anytime constituents do that, we have a responsibility to respond to them. And so, we have looked at it, and I'll let Mr. Roof kind of share some details.
There was a clog that took place in one of the incidents, and after following that removal of the clog, we did camera the lines and jet the lines. At this time, they're clear. The second incident was more of a network issue with DPW and community outage.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just, you know, for the record, this is obviously a concern to the community, so just knowing that that infrastructure has the capacity to handle the volume of students, and that that's not the issue, that there were secondary issues that were beyond, well, kind of beyond control in the one community circumstance. Madam Chair, may I just ask one more follow-up question? Actually, I crossed it off, so I don't have a follow-up question. Thank you very much.
Ms. Raviyan.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a handful of questions, and I'm going to start with the big ones first. The pension shift, the $9.1 million from the state to the LEA, wow, how are you going to address, you know, if this is $9.1 million, how, how do you deal with that not, what's the impact?
It is, it is zeroed out on our budget because our friends at the General Assembly made that a county government liability, so you will see that, I don't know in what section of the county budget, but yeah, so that is, so in order to help balance the state budget, the state put forth a proposal and was ultimately adopted to take the unfunded liability increase for just next year, and shift that from a state obligation to a county government obligation.
So, you're saying we'll see this $9.1 million, but somewhere else in the county budget?
You will. And I failed to mention, like, even though, right, the, our, the county executive funded $52 million to the, to AACPS, it really is 61, because that $9 million is going towards pay for teacher pensions. But, yeah, but the, but the Pension Board will be sending the county government a bill for $9.1 million.
Okay, that reduces my risk of having a heart attack. Okay, the next one I wanted to ask is about, I know this is always just a tricky balance between, okay, so I'm, the 129 positions requested and then 28 funded. I know that there's always a balance between, you know, trying to decide what you can actually hire, or how many teachers you can actually hire, how many you can fund, but not funding things that you don't think you can hire. Where, how, where did you, how did you come up with the 28? Or, I guess, I guess that's maybe a question, I guess, I'm assuming you worked with the county executive to get to that 28, and I'm curious if there's any, or if that's not the case.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we, you know, obviously, you discuss priorities, obviously, our priority was, our ask was 120 and then plus the, the early childhood one, so 155 in total. As I've alluded to, our special education population continues to grow faster than our, than the overall enrollment. We have not had new FTEs in special education in some time. We have done a better, some of that is because of the vacancy rates that you alluded to, we had a high, high special education vacancies a few years ago. Under the Dr. Bedell and the Board's leadership, in negotiation with TAC, we now pay a $2,000 incentive bonus to all special educators. I think that has helped somewhat, but we have, overall, our vacancy rate is down, but obviously, we, we had, we, our request from the county government was $106 million, so we knew we had to pare it down. We've made, I think, great strides in compensation, becoming more competitive in that front. We wanted to continue to maintain that, continue that investment, while still being able to try and get some new positions where, where needed. And so, that's really why you see the reduction there that you do.
And let me just speak to that too, Matt, because we are, we, we employ over 5,800 teachers, and last check in a board presentation from our HR department, we had 59 vacancies. Those numbers are, I mean, it's absolutely amazing, just given the fact that a lot of school districts are struggling, the staff, and a lot of those 59 positions are very difficult, singleton, hard-to-staff positions. We recently had a job fair at Savannah Park. This job fair was, at least from HR's experience, one of the highest-attended job fairs in recent history, according to our HR department. 250 people showed up, and I think we offered, 106 have already accepted. We feel good about our ability to try to fill some of these new positions, just given the interest that people have right now. You have several other school districts, Hartford County had to lay off 160, you've had several other school districts, because of budget constraints, where they've had to lay off people. That is opening up opportunities for us, including federal employees who are career changers. We're taking advantage of all of that. And so, I think our goal is, let's show the county council and the county executive that we can actually staff these positions, even though we know there's a need for more, we need to be able to demonstrate to you all that we can staff what we did get approved, and then potentially come back and ask for more. That original request of 119 positions, that's basically, if we could get everything that we need to properly service our children in a special education, that is what it would take for us to do the job that we want to do, bring in more programs into the district, because we're outsourcing, and that outsourcing is extremely expensive, you heard that from Matt a few minutes ago. We want to be able to do more of these things internally and reduce the cost, but also help reduce the workload on folks because we're better staffed. So, this is a beginning, it's a starting point under our new leadership structure with Mary Talar.
Okay, so, is there, there is some correlation in that number? I mean, there is some correlation between this number and sort of anticipating what you think we'll be able to hire?
Yes.
Okay, and maybe not desiring to go, not desiring to have, you know, a bunch of vacant positions, because it's, it's silly to have money that you're sitting there waiting to use, but you can't use it instead of actually spending on something that's, you know, you can, you can get.
Yeah, Councilwoman Raviyan, that has always been my position, you know, to be realistic about what we can do and can't do. We have been able to demonstrate that we are better off at being able to staff this school district, and we think, we, for now, we can, this, let's, let's show that we can do this, and then we can come back for more.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple more questions. The next one is about the non-invasive weapon detection system. So, I know there had been discussion about, you know, trying to get that system funded for all the highs, all the comprehensive high schools, is that kind of where it started?
Well, no, it started with a potential pilot, and I think when the request came in from a board member, it was, you know, if we are able to figure out a way to, to have more schools, because that $2.4 million may have only added two or three more schools, but maybe we would have been able to put some non-invasive technology at multiple interests, so whether it's kids coming in, in the front door, or kids coming in to do athletic events, you would probably have more of an opportunity to have more of a secure facility as a result, not necessarily that it would be for every single school. It would give us a few more schools to potentially pilot, which, you know, ultimately addresses the equity aspect of it, that you're looking at different schools to sample, so it's not like a certain school's being solowed out. And so, but we, we know that we have the opportunity with two, we've also applied for a grant to help support us in being able to pilot this non-invasive technology, and we're waiting to hear back on that. And so, if we are able to do two to four schools, it's a start, and then we can come back with some data on whether this has really made it, made a, helped to deter or not. We just don't know until we pilot.
Okay, and then, I guess, related to that, I was talking with President Silkworth before the meeting, and he said that there is some mobility, there's some portability of these systems?
Yes.
So, does that go to the extent of, you know, you could try it out, or, like, you could literally move it around from school to school, you know, maybe keep, keep folks on their toes?
That's correct.
You don't know which school it's going to be at, or, like you said, I hadn't really thought of the idea of having it at, you know, school events, athletic events, or whatever kinds of things, so there's enough portability to accommodate that?
Yes, the portability will absolutely allow for us, at an athletic event, to move it and have it set up. So, I think it's, it's similar to what they're doing in Hartford County, and if many of you, I'm certain, remember, they had a fatality at Hartford County earlier in the school year with, with a gun getting onto a campus. And so, I think what they've done with the limited amount of resources they have is they've actually purchased, and I don't know the name of the company, I don't go that far down, and I just let, kind of let the security team come back and do their due diligence, but it is different than what I was thinking, but I want to see what it looks like. We have a school district utilizing something like that, and so, being able to move it, it will keep you off guard. You don't know when you walk down a certain hall, and it won't slow people up, you just walk right through, but if it goes off, you know, then we need to figure out why it's going off.
Okay, following up on that, I actually didn't know about the Hartford County, so that's interesting, and I'm curious if there's any sort of data about, you know, weapons they've been able to confiscate as a result of having that program? I don't, I don't know if there's anybody that has information about that.
They just started, yeah, so they're saying that they just started.
Okay, so two.
So, they wouldn't have enough data at this point.
Okay, let me see. Oh, okay, the early orientation for new teachers. I'm curious, as, as a person who's been through that multiple times, because I've worked in a few different districts, I'm curious what kind of things would be added as, you know, the, I, I'm, I'm just curious, you know, there's always a balance between getting the critical professional development out to new teachers, but also not overwhelming them, and so, I'm curious what kind of things, if you have specifics about what you'd like to add to extend that orientation.
Well, I'll say this, because of the significant amount of introduction of new high-quality materials, I think more time on task, bringing in Reveal and bringing in Amplify, those have been some huge additions. We're also going to be converting, moving over from the current LMS, Learning Management System, we have to Canvas in the, in the fall, and that's a huge undertaking. But also, I think for us, really ensuring that we are helping new folks transition to really understand how to navigate all of the resources that we have, whether it's the employee service, understanding self-employee service. I think sometimes we bring people in, you do two days, and you're not doing your full due diligence to really help people get acclimated, become acclimated with the system. This is going to help us have people on a better footing as a result, and it's something that we've, I believe, also discussed, well, I don't want to, no, I'm not going to say that. I was about to say with the union, but I don't, I, Christina needs to be here to speak to that. But, I, I know why we're doing it, because of a significant amount of changes that we've made in the system, and we want people coming in ready to rock and roll when those students show up.
Okay, I'll just note that, again, sharing my personal experience when I started in AACPS in 2010, of all the things that I got trained on in professional development on, in that, you know, initial new teacher orientation, Power School was not one of them. And so, I actually, I hopefully, you know, things like that are included.
That's correct.
I heard you say ESS, so that's a good, you know, sign too, that things like that are actually being addressed, because all of those things, I had to have teachers like, hey, can you show me how to do this, because we didn't actually learn how to do this, a new teacher orientation, which seems like, you know, really critical, and obviously, the, the man, the learning, new learning management system is probably something, I guess, everyone's going to have to learn, so there's going to be, for new teachers, but also, you know, teachers already in the system, because.
I just witnessed this morning, all of our assistant superintendent, our network superintendents and directors being trained on it. I actually had my tutorial, maybe two Fridays ago, where I went through it and played with it for 45 minutes. It's amazing, and we have a number of people in the sandbox, but we do want to make sure that, and we have pilot schools right now, but we want to make sure as new people are coming in and we're picking up a significant amount of new people, as, as you see with our vacancy rates, that they do understand how to get in and fully utilize Canvas when they get started.
And I, I, what I'm hearing is that it's much more user-friendly and much more intuitive.
It's much more intuitive and much more adaptive.
Okay, and hopefully, that's true on, on the, you know, parent and student side as well.
It will be, and listen, I mean, you probably one of the people complaining about the other one when I first got here, where I had to make some changes.
100%.
Okay, all right, all right, so I'm just responding.
So, thank you. No, 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 that, thank you, that, I know that is appreciated. I have zero doubt that that's appreciated. My last, my last point, or last sort of question I just want to ask is, I'm really excited to see, you know, the investment, especially in the middle school athletics. I mean, like I said, I've been subbing around the system this semester, and it's actually really eye-opening, you know, you can see what's going on in different schools and how different things work, and you're like, literally in the classroom with kids, so that's really awesome experience, but, and you can see the enthusiasm that it's bringing for, for the middle school kids, you know, to see them, like, they come, you know, in their uniform on game day, and they're excited to, like, go places and do stuff. As a person who teaches or has taught music for a lot of my career, I would love to see that same sort of, that sort of same investment in extracurricular arts. And one of the things I know Councilwoman Fiedler raised was the musical instrument repair and replacement, and that one sort of, I, I kind of want to figure out a way. I'm glad that it is something that gets funded in a fourth quarter transfer, but I would love to just see it, like, solidly in the budget, and so, I would love to work with my colleagues to make that happen, because that is a, you know, that's the difference for a lot of kids, that's a difference between learning to play an instrument and not playing an instrument. And as a chorus teacher, I'm okay, because they come to my class if they're not going to be, you know, taking a musical instrument, but if they really want to learn how to play flute, or trumpet, or clarinet, or viola, you know, we want to open all of those doors, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Love to see, you know, as you build up the athletics, you know, building up the arts as well.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to circle back to Ms. Raviyan's questions about the non-invasive weapons detection system. I was just hoping that you might be able to, without compromising operational security, because I understand that's, there's a component to that. Could you just maybe articulate a little bit about what is different about this type of system versus, I think a lot of parents, when they hear weapon detections, they automatically think, you know, metal detectors, TSA-type security, and I understand that's not the intent, but if you could maybe put some words that would allow folks to be able to have a picture in their mind, kind of what we're talking about, so that they...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's very similar, if you've been to the Comcast Center, if you've been to the Smithsonian Museum, if you've gone to a Ravens game or an Orioles game, you walk in and you don't really feel like you're being searched, right? I mean, you just, you walk right through the technology, it doesn't create a long line of people having to wait unless everybody's waiting to come in right before, you know, first pitch or something. But generally, it's, it's a lot different than a metal detector. I've had a bunch of metal detectors at my high schools in my previous school district. We had kids lined up, taking all day to get in, it was cold, you know, and, and I, I just think that having this non-invasive technology, the ultimate goal is for it to be able to easily detect if you have some type of weapon on you. And it doesn't, and it's so, it's no different, I, I don't know how to explain it anymore than everywhere that I've gone where they've had non-invasive technology, whether it's Evolve technology or these ones at the games, people easily walk through, it, it's, it doesn't hold people up, and if you, and if it does detect you, you have a staff member who will pull you to the side and say, hey, I need to check this because it just went off, or an administrator or something of that nature. But, that, you know, without having my, my dough batting here or Monique here, that's really the best answer I can provide at this point, if, if I need to bring them back to give you a more clear answer, I can do that, and I don't know if you have any comments on that.
I think the other thing is the, the mobility that we talked about, right? The portability.
Because you can't do that with a regular metal detector, it's stationary.
What you said was very helpful, so I think, I think you articulated that very well, and I appreciate it. I just wanted to follow up, last year, I think it was at the same hearing, there was a pretty extensive discussion about cell phone use and the institution of a new policy, and I was just curious, kind of to close the loop on that, I know that there are new things were tried this school year, and I'm just curious to see if you all feel like that was, has that been successful, has there been a positive, has there been a positive improvement?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've not been backed into a corner where I need to do a whole full-blown district ban, I mean, I, I have been very adamant on that, that I will do it if, if we're getting a lot of complaints from educators, but we're not getting the complaints. I've, I rarely have received emails, and I think there's three board members in here who probably, you know, they could say the same thing. I don't know if they've received a whole bunch of emails about people complaining about students being on their devices. Are we perfect? I'm not going to sit here and say we're perfect, I could tell you, we're far better off this year, and when I go to schools... I could tell you we're far better off this year, and when I go to schools, I have educators telling me that there has been a different focus as a result of, of that policy being, uh, put in place this school year. Um, and so at this point, I don't have any reason or any data to dictate that I need to make a shift on what we've started doing this year for the upcoming school year.
Anecdotally, what you just said matches what I've heard from teachers, parents, and even students as well. So it's, it's always nice to see when the math maths, we're hearing the same positive feedback from different channels. Uh, it's nice, just nice to hear. I just wanted to close the loop on that conversation because we did spend so much time last year, I think, discussing it. Um, and then last comment, um, not a question, but really a comment, which is, I'm super excited about the appropriation for, um, the ag education in this budget. Um, agriculture is a, obviously a huge economic driver in the state of Maryland, and I think it's great to see the school system investing. Um, really happy that the county executive agreed to support that, um, to equip, you know, our students, our next generation of, of ag industry, uh, workers. So, thank you for, for being part of that.
I'm excited about that too. Um, I shared that with Dawn Pulliam when she first came on. You know, I had the, the, I was very fortunate to, uh, have supervised, uh, two magnet programs in two different school districts that were ag, that were, uh, agriculture, agricultural education magnets. And, um, so I really get it and understand what we need to do and, you know, I think we're doing a Magnet Schools of America audit. We just received the findings, so I'm getting ready to start reading through this binder about this thick. That might be my summer reading, um, but to ultimately see what the findings are telling us that we need to do around magnet school enhancements, what's working, what's not working. Um, but, you know, I, I mean, I have a big vision around ag and hydroponics and aquaponics. It may be bigger than what this county is ready for, so we just need to move slowly and that's what we're doing.
I look forward to continuing to have those discussions, so thank you all for everything that you do.
Absolutely.
Ms. Picker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I, I wanted to comment on, um, a couple of things that have been said by my colleagues. One being, um, the, the non-invasive weapon systems. I wanted to just follow up on a conversation that you and I had regarding the relationship between the school system and the new, um, real-time information center.
Yeah, absolutely. We had an opportunity to bring several school board members to take a look at that. Um, we're excited about, uh, finalizing this MOU. I think I received some language on Friday on where we are in, in that partnership. But what it will do ultimately is significantly reduce response time between the Anarundel County Police Department, um, and, and us, if we have a major event that takes place, that 911 call will automatically trigger the FUSIS system that they've put in place and will allow for us to potentially save lives should we have a significant incident that occur in any of our schools. So, we are excited about that partnership, and, uh, there's a number of other school districts that have partnered, uh, in, in respective cities where they have this particular new technology. Uh, our private schools in Anarundel County, those have already gotten on board, and we're just finalizing our MOU with their legal department on, um, this partnership.
Good, that's great to hear. And then, uh, again, the, I just want to give a shout out to the middle school sports program. I'm seeing it, um, in my household with a high school, um, high school athlete that is attending and being encouraged to attend the middle school games and building that sort of camaraderie and leadership with, through athletics, I think is really neat for both high school students and then, um, the middle school students. And I think athletics as well as, but I also want to agree that other, um, kids, not all kids are motivated by sports, but if we can start enhancing that middle school experience, which I know is on your list, um, in other ways with, uh, the arts, uh, and even, um, science, I think we can, we can maybe tackle some of our attendance issues and, and get kids excited to be at school um, in those difficult, challenging, really fun middle school years.
Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, we are, uh, convening a task force. We are actually looking at a full-blown redesign of the middle school experience in Anarundel County. Um, I, I've, I've said this and I've gone on record, uh, expressing that I just don't think a lot of people know how to do middle school well across the country. This is not an Anarundel County issue only. I've been in several other school districts, and if you look at our enrollment trends, you will see enrollment goes up with elementary, it goes up at the high school level, it tends to go down in middle school. And I think, and that's not just here, that happened in several other districts that I've worked in. And I think what ends up happening is we focus really hard on elementary, and then we focus really hard on high school. And then we kind of let the middle school kids try to figure it out. Those poor teachers go through a lot trying to figure it out, and so we are going to make a commitment, especially after we get through with this redistricting, I need to get redistricting phase two behind me because it's a nightmare right now. But once we get that behind us, we're going to go all in on really focusing on how do we redesign the middle school experience in Anarundel County. And so you have my commitment there. I attended a soccer game at Anarundel High School. I watched high school kids come down, but not just the high school kids. I sat there and spoke with two high school coaches who came from Anarundel High and was on that field, and we talked for a good hour, hour and a half, just about all kinds of things. But their excitement about being able to see now the kids that are in this county who are going to be coming up to them in the future.
No, I agree. It's a, it's a, it's a really great opportunity for youth as, as long as, so my, that lends, lends itself into my next question or, or commentary about how do we attract and retain, um, those teachers or coaches or sponsors of extracurricular activities to have, create that dynamic experience for our students. Um, it's challenging, I'm sure, um, but you certainly want to make sure that if we're, if the goal is to have a positive impact, that the adults that are taking on those roles are actually providing a positive, uh, impact. So I don't know where we are with stipends and things like that for all of these programs, but I know it's a challenge.
I don't know.
Yeah.
The stipends.
Yeah.
So, depending on if the, uh, coach is a, uh, an employee of AACPS, it's, it's actually, the stipends actually negotiated in negotiated agreement. But yes, it is, um, you have a series of pay scales, right, depending on the sport or the extracurricular activity. Uh, we have taken a look at it, uh, obviously not funded, uh, in this budget. Uh, but it's obviously something that both, I think the board has directed us to continue to look at and, uh, one that, uh, we, we need to, uh, shore up moving forward.
I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'm just going to add that I always say that there's a special place in heaven for middle school teachers.
Amen, me too, because I couldn't do it.
Yes, I remember years ago, one of my neighbors panicked at middle school and moved out of the county because she was sure it was going to be horrible. And I saw her a few months later and I said, how's it going? And she said, I've learned that middle school is hard no matter where you are. And I said, yes ma'am, it is. So, Ms. Rodvian.
Um, thank you. So to follow up on that, um, after teaching a semester of elementary, uh, put me back in middle school anytime because those little people are crazy. Um, they want Band-Aids, they want you to open their milk container, they want their mom, they, they just need everything. Um, so give me the middle school any day of the week. But, um, sorry, on a more serious note, um, I am really glad to hear that you're looking at the middle school experience. I think, um, you know, I, I actually think one of the biggest concerns that I have, just again, from my personal experience working in middle schools for a long time, is, um, how it's working for boys. Um, and I, I feel like the sports, um, are, you know, obviously, girls, and we're in an age where girls and boys all play sports, but I feel like that is especially an important anchor to help boys that are, you know, kind of like disengaged and trying to find their footing um, in middle school, so that's, that's really huge. Um, one of the things, um, I'm, I'm excited about this ag program. Um, I love that you're, you've got Phoenix and you've got Southern. Um, I've actually subbed quite a bit at Phoenix because I live really close to it. Um, and I will tell you that the ag program for, I've subbed for the middle school, uh, or the Phoenix ag teacher, and I've spent some time with the middle school kids. Um, and they're kids that actually are not from places where they have any exposure to agriculture, yet their response is amazing. I mean, there's like, when I come in and I have to go track down another teacher who knows how to do all the things out in the, the farm with, uh, you know, hydroponics and the, the, uh, the fish and everything they've got there, um, the kids just love it. Like there's something so tangible, like something so wonderful about having something so tangible. Like they, I was there right after their baby chicks hatched and they just wanted to like, they just wanted to be with the, you know, chicks and you, the, the baby chickens, not that kind of chicks. But, um, so I would love to see that expanded, um, to really all of this, you know, all of the maybe middle schools or high schools. Because, again, if you're looking for engagement, it's there. You know, when kids, you say, give them, give them, here's your chicken feed, go feed the chickens, go find the, you know, go pick up all the eggs. That's so tangible and, um, so engaging in a way that a lot of things, you know, like, it's a hard group to capture their attention. And so that's to me, a place where it could really be captured in that middle school, um, especially in that middle school space. But I'll stop, um, you know, going on and on about that because I think you probably, you'll be on the same page.
Well, yeah, because it's, it's not only tangible and engaging, it's therapeutic.
Yeah.
That's the piece that we really have to focus on. How do we really help kids have more exposure to things that are therapeutic, rather than it just being this? It's almost like we still operate in this chalkboard era, right? You sit down, you get this, you do your math reading, arithmetic, you know, writing and all of that. And that's part of where we want to enhance the experience, you know? How do we, how do we make it authentic, therapeutic, uh, that the kids just want to come to school every day because they have a few things they're looking forward to, that can also complement the work that they have to do and the things that they don't enjoy that much, right? Which is sometimes some of the core classes. So that's kind of the angle that we want to go to get to what you just talked about and how therapeutic that is even for kids that show up with some social and emotional issues that we have to continue to help support. But they don't act up when they are doing what you just talked about. And you're seeing it, a living testimony of what, what happens when you have those kind of programs in these schools.
Yeah, and, and it's really cool to see, you know, kids that can curse up a storm and, you know, are, are ready to fight, but then they'll sit there and hold this baby chick in their hands and just like, they'll be so gentle with it. It's like you're, you're bringing out a totally different side of a kid that they need to know that they have. Um, okay, the last thing, um, that I was going to suggest is, um, again, in my experience as a sub, it's been very eye-opening. There are different levels of, um, implementation or different manners of implementation with respect to the cell phone policy. And I think it might be worth creating like a survey of, for teachers, uh, to just see like, how are they doing it? And it's, it's definitely not 100% the same. I, I do think it's light years better than it was to just have a, you know, a, a countywide rule. It's easy to come in and just say, this is the rule. But there are, you know, exceptions made in different degrees, um, and, and maybe that's okay.
Well, I don't know that that's okay, but I really appreciate you sharing that with me because it's right in time for our next principals meeting. So we, you know, we can have conversations just around, how do we make sure that we have alignment? It's, it's no different than what we're talking about as we look at grading regulations. Like one A in a same subject area can't look different if you go to another class versus you, your kid transferring to another school, and that A is significantly different. And to your point, that is true. I think there has been different forms of how people implement, but I think we, just like a grading regulation, we want to be as consistent as possible with what we're doing around our cell phone regulation. So I, that's great, and it won't be nothing where I'm going to look to beat up people. But I think ultimately, we, we need to, we need to be more consistent, um, so thank you for that.
And, and maybe just to be realistic, I mean, you have different student groups that are coming into the building with different needs and whatnot, and so maybe a little bit of variation in how it's implemented is okay. But, uh, anyway, just food for thought.
Thank you.
So, um, how much, I'm, I was trying to do some, you know, back of the envelope charting to see how much, when y'all make a request for positions, what you budget for each position? And it seems to vary wildly. So I'm looking at the birth to five services, and it looks like it's only, it's 68,000 per position, whereas the, um, special ed and comprehensive schools, it's 94,000. Am I, am I right on that?
Yeah, it just, uh, depends on the type of position, right? So a, uh, on the birth to five, there's, I, I can get the specifics, but there's probably teaching assistants. You can afford teaching assistants, which are, uh.
So, so those wouldn't be, that, I was looking at all of those as being t- teachers, but birth to five could be, they're not broken, you haven't broken that down.
Also, uh, related service providers, occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech therapists, which all
Sure.
are highly, more highly compensated.
Right, but I mean, but it definitely seems that the birth to five are, are lower. So I'm just, just looking if, you know, if we can come up with extra money, I always want to give positions if possible, so looking at what is the average we need for, per position, um, if we were to add more in there. But, so is 94,000 roughly what y'all do?
Eighty-six-five is what we're using for, uh, general education teachers.
Okay.
Uh, and that includes the, um, money for their, um, ensure, like the healthcare.
Everything, all benefits and everything. Okay, that, thank you, that gives a good kind of, um, estimate there. So, um, I know part of the new Old Mill High School, it, it really exciting, is going to have, um, a, uh, regional center for special education that we're going to be able to bring, hopefully bring some of our children back from non-public settings. Is that correct?
I think it's inclusive of that, in addition to the 16-year-olds that we want them to have that unified type experience in a learning environment. And so those students will be the students that we will be moving into, um, part of this new program. Will be the only school district in the state doing something like this, which is basically a school within a school model.
Okay. And how many students are we thinking that will serve?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. But I mean, it's not a significant amount of students because those, uh, special centers don't have large enrollment.
Sure, sure. It's kind of, because, um, I mean, we want all children to have the correct educational placement and the best one for them. But if we can increase our services in the school system to bring them back, rather than going to non-public, it's better for them and it certainly saves us money as well.
And you're putting them in new, uh, a new, they have in new amenities. So you, when you go to some of our centers right now and the ones that we've targeted, you can see just the state of the facility. And when we talk about inequities, right, these are, you know, adult-centered inequities that we can address with some of our new builds. So why not take advantage of that, but also give our students that, some of that traditional experience because that's the world that they're going to be moving into.
Right, right. No, I'm, I'm looking forward to that. Um, yes, our special centers are amazing places and do amazing things, but they are not educationally adequate for our children at, at this point in time, for sure, um, to have that. Um, check my list, I think y'all have answered most of my questions that I had jotted down. And how many new pre-Ks are being added this year?
Four, so four.
Four, and that's all y'all asked for. We got the funding for all four to have that.
Yep.
And that, does that include, is that for brand-new pre-Ks? Or does that include the converting the three-year-olds to?
So that's for, yeah, so we're converting all the, the three-year-olds to four and then adding four more.
Okay, so we really will be having a greater increase than four for pre-K. We're just, for, for pre-K four, right? So we're getting closer to be able to serve all of those pre-K four kids.
And, and the registration numbers are unbelievable.
Oh, I'm sure.
Huge demand.
Right, they all want it, that's for sure. I mean, and it's great. Um, okay, I believe that's all I have. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You actually said occupational therapy and it triggered my memory. That was my question that I had listed that I didn't ask. Um, occupational therapy, I assume that that falls within the special education category?
It does.
Okay, is that in the birth to five services or the comprehensive school and specialized programming, or both?
It's, uh, comprehensive, the comprehensive school programming.
Okay, so for occupational therapy specifically, are there increases there in either FTEs or services, or is it flat?
I can get you specifics. I think there's one or two, uh, increases amongst the 28.
Okay, perfect. If you could send that, if you could actually send a breakdown of the 28 in that category, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, what, um, the telehealth that y'all have in here, um, how widely has that been being used in the schools? Um, and if this is not funded, will it mean we have to end that telehealth program?
Well, it didn't, it wasn't funded, right?
It was not funded. Right now, it's, it looks like it's only 33,000.
We don't have it at the moment.
Oh, you don't have any tele.
Yeah, this would be a new, right.
Oh, I thought y'all were doing some mental health, telehealth. You're not?
Not, this is, um, yeah, this would, this would be. Not, this is, yeah, this, this would be for licenses. I, we may have done something during the pandemic, but.
Okay. So this would be licenses, would this be for every school, or would this would be a targeted program?
It would be targeted, depending on need.
Okay, so, all right, and this would give you, all right, thirty-three thousand, so this is just licenses? Because I was going to say, that sounds really low to be accessing anything, okay. All right. Okay, any other questions? Oh, I do have one more. Relocatables, learning cottages, trailers, whatever we want to call them. I know that they're, the, the amount is down in this because of redistricting, we don't need as many. Are we looking to remove them from schools that have them now? That we've got a lot of schools that have had them hanging out there for a while, and so are we looking to, to take them down?
Not unless we need to, because they're deployed in growth areas usually. So in the future, there may be needed. We are looking at retrofitting, upgrading some of those learning cottages. Some of them are getting close to thirty years of age and need a little bit of love. So that's what some of the funding would be used for.
Yes, I can say my home elementary school, those learning cottages were there before my kids started twenty-plus years ago. So, yeah, they've been there a long time. Yes, yes, I'll take you out there and show them to you, Dr. Bedell. So, all right, any other questions? As always, thank y'all so much. Very much appreciate it, and keep doing the good work. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? Not? May I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five at nine AM, when we will continue with the department budget presentations.